The minutes from the January 23 regular meeting as circulated, could I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Council Dovento, seconded by Council Leteri. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. January 21, the special meeting minutes as circulated. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Council Dovento, seconded by Council Leteri. Any discussion or no? Those are the minutes of just going to an executive session.
Yeah.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. And then that same night, we went from the open meeting to the executive session and those minutes are there. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Council Dovento, seconded by?
Second.
Council Sanford. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. The public hearing on the middle high school loan order, we're going to open that public hearing and then we're going to continue it to the next meeting. So officially, we're going to open it now and then we're going to continue it to the next meeting. It's an advertising issue and a posting issue. So we're going to have the actual continuation of the hearing at the next meeting and then vote at the next meeting. Verizon Shirley Street. Your name, sir?
My name's Everett Bryan.
Hey, Everett Bryan.
I'm a right-of-way engineer representing Verizon New England and engineering and data solutions. Our petition this evening is to place a new stub pole or guide pole number 173 over one on Shirley Street across the street from number 93 Shirley. And on the plan, if you have a copy before you, this proposed pole is going directly across the street from the existing John Young pole number 173. It will be placed on the back of the curb and then a sidewalk anchor will be placed on the back of sidewalk. This pole is necessary because the pole line is currently guided by a pole that's across two properties, actually on Cross Street, and that pole is failing, almost ready to fall over now. And it's urgent, and I emphasize urgent, that we get this in as soon as possible. Our line foreman and our engineer for this project says it's critical that this pole is guided. If it isn't guided properly, that whole pole line could be affected on Shirley Street. We'd like to do this as soon as possible. And do you have any questions?
We open it up to the public. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the pole? Close the side of the hearing in favor. Is there anybody opposed to the pole? Do you have to name and precinct, please?
Delahanty Precinct 6. President Council and all councils, I was prepared to speak at the last meeting in opposition to this pole. The reason the pole that's in the rear of my property now is failing is because Verizon doesn't, evidently do maintenance every year. When he says it's failing, it's, there's a sag in the guy wire that goes out to Cross Street now because the pole's probably leaning 18 inches to two feet. So it's not supporting anything on Cross Street right now. The guy wire is just free. There's no tension on it. I met with my precinct 6 council early today. We watched the entire job. The pole, I don't know if this is part of the problem that they're looking to address, the pole on Cross Street right off of Shirley on Cross heading up towards Almont is a fairly new pole. It's large. It tapers down at the top and it doesn't appear to be carrying the load very well that's on it. It's a brand-new load. The wiring was all replaced probably within the last three years. But Verizon's history with their poles and what we told and what we get are usually two different things. There's a lot of poles in Winthrop right now. You're going to see two poles twinned together. And I know the fire chief has been addressing it as a public safety issue. It just continues. The poles aren't being replaced. Nothing's being done. The poles existing that are twinned together stay twinned together. It's an issue that the cable company has to come and move their stuff. The electric company has to come and move their stuff. Verizon has to move their stuff. I don't know who's in charge of coordinating, but it's not happening. The side of the street where they want to put this stub pole, there are no poles from the Citro station to Veterans Road. It's clear. The sidewalk is clear all the way. The poles are all on the odd side, numbered side of the street. So across the street from my house, there's a piece of town land. It's an empty lot. It runs from 95, the edge of the 95 Shirley Tree property, to the next house on Shirley Street heading towards Veterans. Ninety-eight percent of the time, that section of sidewalk is not shoveled. It's up to somebody that's a buddy to shovel it, but it doesn't get shoved. Therefore, anybody that has handicap issues has to come on the even side of the street where the sidewalk is free and clear. There are no poles. On the odd side of the street where there's the next pole down from where Mr. Bryan explained, they have two poles across now, there's a fence right there. So the sidewalk width during a snowstorm is greatly reduced. It's not handicap accessible. A wheelchair can't get through there. So they're on the even side of the street. The snowplows push the snow onto the sidewalk. I get a two-snowblower width clear and anybody can use that side. And if you combine a snowstorm and it happens to be a wheelchair coming down, that's where they are. That's not going to take place with these changes. I spoke with our handicaps affair officer earlier this evening and I measured with Council Calla, the area marked off by Verizon now as the new pole location and the guide, they've actually marked where they want the supporting guy wire to come down. In my estimation, that's a 42-inch width. The minimum for the town of Winthrop Handicap Commission is 48 inches. So we're already restricting the sidewalk as it is, reducing access to people that need it most that can't be out in the street. In the summertime, you probably don't have a problem, but that's not the condition year round. There's two trees there. One's 80 years old, one's 60 years old. That pole's going right there. I spoke to Mr. Bryan last Thursday at 9:57 in the morning and he assured me that somebody would contact me and meet me out there between then and now. No response. So for the reason of the trees, the accessibility on the sidewalk, and the fact that that whole side of the street is free and planned out, there shouldn't be a pole.
Okay.
There's other ways to address it than that. I'd like to see it dealt with in a different manner.
Did you respond to that, Mr. Bryan? Is there any alternative to having a pole on that side of the street?
I don't think so. Not reasonable alternatives. I don't see one. Engineer doesn't see one. The line foreman doesn't see one.
Can you just show me where this is? Right here. I'll get the map. Right here. Sir, have you seen it? What are we talking about? This pole right here?
It's this, this pole right here is one of these we guided.
And so where do you want to put the other one?
It needs to go right across the street, directly across from where this pole is now.
And then the wires come across the street?
There will be a guy wire across the street. That's the purpose of the pole. It's to guide this pole because this pole is not in line and therefore it is leaning toward these houses, these buildings.
So there's no wires coming over here?
No, there aren't. You don't guide it.
Did you pass that down? You have more copies of that?
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
Yes, go ahead, Cal.
I'm just wondering, do we want to take a look at this in the daylight and get a feel? Does anybody have a feel for that or is this just not a big deal to anybody?
I'd like to know more about it, yeah.
Well, Council.
Council Calla.
Okay. Well, I have looked at it in the daylight and I've been down there several times, not just today, but prior to. I have a lot of pictures that I took. That area is totally overcrowded with telephone poles from Mr. Delahanty's house, the corner of Veterans Road and Shirley, to Reed Bear Street. There are literally, I think, 12 to 14 poles there. There's one like a small one at the end. There's five poles there with double poles on them that have not been removed and we've been promised and promised and promised that these poles would be removed. Mr. Delahanty also has a point in that this pole that's bowing the way it is, has been bowing like that now probably for some time, didn't just happen yesterday. You know, the repair work or the installation of this pole probably wasn't put in correctly to begin with to hold that type of weight that is on that pole. I mean, if this is only a three-year-old pole, that shouldn't be bowing like that. I have a picture of that too and it's really bowing. And then Mr. Delahanty doesn't have a problem with if you want to correct or reinstall a pole that's in the current location, which is way in the back of his yard, to have those guide wires to try to pull that pole back up. He doesn't have a problem with that. There has to be just another alternative solution to that where this is absolutely, it's an emergency, has to be done right away. And another thing, as a real estate broker in this town of Winthrop, he has a valuable piece of property with over 10,000 square feet of land. You want to put this pole right in the middle of the span of his front, his yard. This property has the possibilities down the road. If he wanted to put in a garage, he'll be limited. If he wants to change where his driveway is, he'll be restricted. If he wants to add on to his property, now you're devaluing his property that he's paid his taxes all these years, had a nice frontage, there's a pole across the street. Why can't you connect that guideline to the pole across the street? Why does it have to go in front of his house and then across the street? There were like three of them in a row. You can't pick one of them to work off of or maybe put a new pole in his backyard to hold up the weight on that other pole.
I'm not certain that the pole that's guiding the pole on Shirley Street now is on Mr. Delahanty's property. I would ask him if it is in fact on his property.
Yes, sir. The existing stub pole, if you call it?
Yes.
Yes, and there's a guy that runs from the pole in the back of the yard to Shirley Street and right in front of 93, one of the double poles. And there's a guy that goes Cross Street, the pole right on the corner where the new lines are kind of arcing that over because they didn't put a guy support, a sidewalk support on that pole on Cross Street here.
Council?
So in all due respect, I would suggest that I would like to see that you go back to whoever it is that you need to speak to to try to find an alternative solution to this. It's just not right that we should have to lose trees. We're begging for money to plant trees in this town. We were so fortunate, we were able to plant 80 of them last year. This is a lovely seaside community and we're now being inundated with wires on both sides of the street typically. It's on one side of the street and you have a clear path on the other side of the street to plant trees and to have something look a little bit normal. Now they're going to be crisscrossed, then after this one shortly down the road, oh well, you know what? We need it over here. Now that we have it there, let's just put another one over here so we can connect. And before you know it, the whole street's gone again. Would you like it in front of your house?
Could I ask, Mr. Bryan, what has changed that's caused this emergency to happen? There's been no change in building or anything there for the last, I don't know, 100 years. What has changed in the condition that, I guess there's a pole in Mr. Delahanty's yacht that has failed? Is that what it is?
It is failing. It is not supporting, it is not guiding the pole on Shirley Street now.
Can that pole be replaced to do that guiding as opposed to putting another pole on?
It could potentially be done that way, but we don't do, we don't put private property poles anymore. Whenever we need to guide a pole, we don't go to the property and ask permission to place the pole on his property unless it's only serving him or her. We place the poles within the public way as we're allowed to or we're guideline to place poles within the public way through the national law. So this is the only option that my line foreman and engineer see for this that's viable. So I would like to address a couple of the items that were brought up. There was a mention of dual poles in the city or in the town. Our line foreman says there are 90 poles waiting for the town fire alarm to be activated. There are also, we have removed a large number of dual poles according to the line foreman. I don't have that report right in front of me, but I can provide it to the council as we need. We have in fact replaced a lot of dual poles and transferred a lot of poles and are waiting on other entities to transfer their cables and equipment before we can transfer any I don't think the scenario of placing numerous poles on that side is viable. I've never seen Verizon place poles just randomly like that. It's very expensive to place poles and maintain them. So when they ask for one, they usually do it. There is no curb cut there now that I can see on that vacant lot. If there were a curb cut, we could place it to one side or the other than the pole. The pole needs to go there from our perspective. And National Grid's perspective and Comcast, all on this pole. If you have a bad storm out there and the sink comes down, everybody on Shirley Street is going to be affected.
Just a correction on the fire lines that are on there. Can you come into the?
Can you shed a little light on the whole project? What went on several years ago? We set a new power station behind the library. The town kind of let their guard down because as you leave Winthrop and you, what we call the missing link of all road, you'll see that huge, I think it's 13,000 volt line that's hung up above. What it does, when it hits the town line, it goes underground. It goes underground the length of Revere Street, length of Revere Street, it goes up Revere Street hill, over the hill, hits the pole at the corner of Locust Street and that's where the town didn't force the electric company to continue to bring that line in underground. They allowed it to go overhead down Locust Street. From Locust Street, it makes a right, heads down Cross Street. Again, this large bundle of cables is counted, leave it off of these poles. I would say four different locations over the last two or three years, especially after the Northeast as he speaks to, and that's probably the failure of his pole. I've had to call National Grid because of the drifting of these poles towards the street side where this 13,000 volt line is hung, have pulled on the house services to the point that they're popping the weatherheads off the electrical services. So not that, I'm not in agreement to, speaking to his, the double poles in that vicinity right now are all waiting for National Grid to get off. So they really aren't his problem right now. But this whole line that's hanging on Cross Street and as soon as it gets back to Shirley Street, it goes underground and it comes back up in this contraption at the corner of Ocean View and Winthrop Street where then again it goes underground and then travels to the rear of our library. Putting this one pole, as Council Calla speaks to, is going to take care of the drifting problem we have on that one pole. But all of the poles that had that 13,000 volt line hanging up, which is very dangerous to the community if it does come down because when it was installed, they said when it comes down, you'll know it because you'll see it. So with that all being said, I think they really have to reevaluate that whole line that's hung from Revere to Locust to Cross because all those poles are drifting into the street.
So in essence, Chief Flanagan, that section of wire should have gone underground? Minutes?
Well, it would have been ideal. I mean, they ran a large section of it underground due to the traffic accidents that we had on Revere Street. I remember the selectmen at that time petitioned the National Grid or Mass Electric at the time. Due to the car accidents that we used to have on Revere Street, they didn't want that hanging above because, you know, that is 13,000 volts is a pretty powerful line. And that's why it's hanging at the very top of the line and counted, leave it. It's not your typical pole wiring, very rarely. That line runs a great distance to Revere overhead as well. But, you know, in a residential community, if you go out to visit it, visit Locust Street and Locust Street at the corner of Cross Street and see some of the improprieties in the street.
Mr. Bryan, so my question, can I continue? So my question to you is that that pole is relatively new. It was put in possibly around three years ago or so. Do you know how long ago it was put in?
Which pole are you referring to?
The pole that's leaning right now, the pole that you're trying to guide, pull it back.
The pole on Shirley Street that needs to be guided?
The one, no, it's on Cross Street.
The one on Cross Street? I don't know how old that pole is. It's on private property, is my understanding.
No, 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 no. There's one right on the sidewalk. The one on the sidewalk, yes.
The one you're trying to correct?
The one that you're trying to correct is on the sidewalk on Cross Street.
But that guy crosses over two private properties, doesn't he?
Well, there is a line that goes over.
It's an aerial trespass.
But my point is, that pole that's holding such high voltage that was put in not that long ago apparently wasn't put in correctly and it didn't have any kind of a supporting system, didn't have the support to hold it up. I mean, if that's as dangerous as it sounds like, you definitely don't want that pole going down. Wouldn't have there been added like support for that pole? They have them on other poles.
Mr. Bryan, you talked about the pole that's on private property that has failed.
That's my understanding, yes.
If that pole could be replaced until you come up with a more complete plan, would that solve the emergency? I know you said you don't put them on private property, but there's one there now and my assumption is that the owner of that property who's here would allow that to be replaced. Is that true? And would that then address the emergency?
Only if you would grant us an easement, permanent easement.
Well, you must have one already. It's already there.
No, there isn't one. It was placed there by verbal permission of prior property owner. You do not have an easement for that pole. It needs to come out.
But what if you had an easement for a period of time, not permanent?
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Chairman. I think it could possibly work. I don't think it's a very desirable solution. But then we need to get this corrected now and put it behind us. That pole needs to go in. There's no other way to guide the pole across the street, there's no other way. Line foreman has no other way to do it. The engineer has no other way to do it. It's a safety issue. We need to place the pole.
Mr. Delahanty.
Mr. Bryan, with all due respect, I can't believe that the engineer and the line foreman actually spent that much time looking at this. They don't have the right address for the existing stub pole that's there. 82 Shirley Street is not even one of my abiding addresses. So I don't know where they got 82. They want to replace the failing pole at 82 Shirley Street. I can't believe that an engineer and a line foreman actually investigated this thoroughly and came up with the wrong address, let alone the fact that the reason the pole is failing is doing lack of maintenance.
Is there any further comment from the council?
Just as a thought, you lost me on this one. The sympathy level for your situation as presented is not winning my heart. You know, to me, if you don't have the right places and you have an extra-large line on top of there, it seems like that this could happen halfway down the block in other places. There's no reason, you can't tell me it's not going to happen all along because of the weight of that line. Correct or incorrect?
Other poles on Shirley Street, you think need to be guided as well as the one we're talking about?
Well, I don't know. The other one telling us what needs to be done.
The engineer and the line foreman gave me my direction. They did look at it. They did investigate it very closely and they stressed the safety, the lack of safety need to be corrected. So, and the line foreman, I would put her against any line foreman in the country.
Hold on. No cross conversation.
As far as engineer, he's the best engineer we have.
What's the will of the council? Is there any further discussion? I guess my suggestion would be that you go back and see if you can work out an agreement with Mr. Delahanty to replace the pole that's not functioning right now and then work on whatever else needs to be done. But that's only my suggestion.
Yes, sir. Can we make a motion to?
Motion to table?
Mm-hmm.
By Council Calla? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Boyager? Any discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is. Thank you, Mr. Bryan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Presentation, Mr. Lasky, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure if I should stand up or should we sit right here?
Or if you feel more comfortable.
You can stand up and face us because we're the ones you want to talk to.
Okay, all right. I don't want to block the camera. I believe I was at the meeting in Stonemont when I followed that gentleman the last time. He kind of warms the crowd up. My name is Fred Lasky and I'm the executive director of the MWRA. I have with me tonight the superintendent of Deer Island, Daniel Bryant, and the director of process control, David De West. And obviously we have Chief Flanagan who serves on our board of directors. I have a short PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to give to put into perspective how this food waste initiative fits into our overall plan and why it's a benefit to all our rate payers that we pursue this with vigor. So if you'd like, if you'd like, I can run through maybe five minutes or so and move these slides very quickly and then we'll get down to the issue again, which is that particular project that I asked Mr. De West and Mr. O'Brien to talk about the details on.
Just hold one second, Fred. Would he be better off over here for you? No, he's good. Okay, good. Go ahead.
Obviously, our goal with the MWRA is not only to provide a great service for the cleaner, for the harbor and all that, but also to manage our rates. And we've been very aggressive with the low interest rates and our bonds and reduced our staffing by a full third, still maintaining all our performance indicators. And our third largest cost center is energy. And we have been very aggressive and frankly, we are energy hogs. The nature of our business and the size of that plant in particular, we are energy hogs. And we consume about $39 million in energy on a given year. So we use a lot of energy. About 22 million of that comes from renewable sources. In other words, the use of the steam from the egg digester, the hydro, the solar, the wind, all those things, the heat we make from the methane, all allows us to be independent, if you will, of the roller coaster of the energy markets. Deer Island is by far our largest energy user. You can see it there in the kind of slate blue, I guess you'd call that, maybe a little colorblind, but it dwarfs, it dwarfs any other of our facilities for the amount of electricity that we use. And those are kilowatt hours right there. Out at Deer Island, you know, obviously pumping, the treatment, this is kind of more in the weeds than you need, but we do use a lot of electricity out there. We've been very aggressive in pursuing the renewables. Right now, we generate about 25% of our electricity in-house and more than half of our overall energy demand comes from renewable sources. And I'll just touch on those very quickly. These are electrical, electricity profile, the STGs, that's the electricity made by the steam. Obviously, when the treated effluent drops into the tunnel, we run it through turbines, the wind, big generators and solar. You can see then 75% is purchased. Here's our total energy because this includes the use of methane for heat and you can see again, 62% of our energy needs come from the use of the methane gas and then the rest is purchased. So we've been very aggressive in trying to become more and more self-sufficient on the energy side and that's good for our rates. It's not only good for the environment, but it's good for the rates. One of the particular things, so again, I'll move very quickly because I know there's other pressing issues, just touch on, obviously, the wind turbines that we see as you come out on the island have been very productive for us. The hope is that we'll put a couple more there as time goes on and there are various subsidies. This has gained us some notoriety. This is an experimental turbine that is a startup company and their goal is to put hundreds of these in the desert in California. We got this basically for the donut and because we allowed them to use our facility and tie it to our grid and so we get free electricity from that flow design. Solar panels, we have three major solar panel facilities out there. In fact, one of the first ones in the state was on Deer Island. Governor Patrick and Speaker Leo came out for the ribbon cutting that day. Here's another solar farm. You can see one of them at the base of the wind turbine as you walk around out towards the end of the island. And again, this is a power purchase program where we actually buy the electricity from a private company. They own and maintain the solar panels. Lighting, you may have noticed some differences in the outside lighting at the island. We've been very, very aggressive in taking advantage of the rebates from the various utilities and basically I can tell you, we have changed every light bulb and every ballast and it's like that scene in Get Smart where he's walking, you're in the beginning and the doors are closing and the lights are going on and off. Well, that's how it is if you walk down these pipe galleries. Some of them are a half mile long and the lights are off in front of you and they come on when you're underneath and then as you could look back, they're shutting off behind you. And again, great savings. And again, great savings, a lot of subsidies from the utilities on this. Just another thing that we did is the way we treat the secondary effluent and the efficiency that we've been able to attain through the reduction in the amount of oxygen we need to produce will save us eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars a year in electricity while maintaining the same quality of effluent going forward. So it's been a full-court press here at the authority to try to rein in our energy costs and take advantage of all the various subsidies. There's the reduction in the energy use from the secondary, just to show it to you visually. Methane, those are our golden eggs right there. These are the geese that lay the golden eggs. We use ninety-eight percent of the methane that's produced. We make steam out of it, we heat the plant, we make hot water with it, and we avoid about fifteen million dollars worth of fuel purchases annually because of the methane gas that comes out of that. Now, remember, back before the plant was running, the sludge that makes the methane was just dumped in the harbor. Now, it's reduced dramatically, and then we make pellets out of it that are shipped around the country to citrus farms and strip mines and things like that. We also give it out to our member communities, so it's a beneficial reuse. There are the digesters, it's basically your stomach, we keep it at about ninety-eight degrees, we mix it, and it really is very, very effective, the methane. And I should also point out in this whole discussion about climate change, and methane gas is a very bad gas for the environment and for the atmosphere. So the fact that we're not only capturing it, it's a very bad greenhouse gas, we are in fact using it to make energy. So it's a win-win for us. The co-digestion, I'll just start the first slide, then I'll ask the two gentlemen to know the details to walk through it. This emanates from an edict that came out of Governor Patrick's administration that they were going to prohibit the disposal of commercial food waste into landfills. And this is not something that's unique to Massachusetts, this is a trend across the country to try to eliminate the landfills being filled up with food waste. And the use of digesters to consume that is an important part of that. You may have seen an article in the paper where Stop &amp; Shop Down in Southeastern Mass is going to build their own digester to handle their food waste from their food processing plant. So that kind of started the ball rolling, and you know, basically what it is—well, why don't you want to jump in and take over for me?
Sure. I'm Daniel O'Brien, Director of Deer Island, and Dave and I, David De West, are working on this project. So the goal here is to bring in very digestible, source-separated organics, means they're pre-processed off-site, and they come to us in a slurry fashion. And listed here on the slide are some of the possible sources of it. We've engaged into a contract with Waste Management to do this. We've addressed this in stepwise fashion to check out the feasibility of it. So we started with this initial study that we completed last year that appeared, doing a paper study that it looked feasible. Then we went into a bench scale, which was a small digester operation we ran out at UMass Amherst. The results were very favorable, and that led us to feel that we could scale it up to the next level, which is we're calling a pilot operation, where we're using two out of our normal eight digesters that would operate. The results, as I said, we got from UMass, shows that the food waste is very digestible, meaning you can get an awful lot of methane out of it. We did a public process to solicit proposals to prepare source-separated organics. Waste Management was the winning proposer. Their contract started late last year, and we have a target startup date for the first week of June. We have to do some on-island modifications in our digester complex to receive this waste and to pump it and inject it into our digesters. Estimated cost as shown in the first bullet is five-hundred to six-hundred thousand dollars. We've been fortunate to receive grants totaling three-hundred thousand dollars to help offset that cost. So we'll be installing new pumps, motors, and grinders, and electrical and control systems to inject it and meter it into our digesters. We'll be using two of our digesters most of the time, and those will be the test digestors, and the other digestors will not receive food waste, so we can compare how those perform versus the ones that aren't getting the food waste. And that way, we'll be able to translate that into potential dollar savings. All the gas we produce, we intend to use on Deer Island through the same processes that Mr. Lasky mentioned. They'll go to the boilers, create steam, and the steam goes to the steam generator to produce electricity. These are the ramp-up numbers we're looking at over the first year. I don't know if it was mentioned, but our board of directors has only approved this project for one year. At the one-year point, they want to reassess what we're seeing for numbers, both in terms of impacts to the plant and the bottom line in terms of finances. We're starting off here, as noted, months one through four, seven tons a day, then to fourteen, then to twenty-one. I know a critical issue is truck traffic associated with this, and the truck numbers in the first phase are estimated to be three a day, and by the third phase, the twenty-one tons, about eight to nine a day.
Do you have a copy of this, or—
No, I apologize.
Yeah, I know.
Because we can't see you.
Sorry about that, council. I have a big copy, and I have a double-sided, double-page for—pass this this way, that, this this way. I apologize. I have to go back, and that's for the record. Who gets that, you? On the end? I apologize.
No, we can't read it.
It looks like you're good.
There's a question, if we could also send it to you electronically, which you posted. So on here, Dr. Boggy Dono, this is our projection of how much additional gas we would produce at the different stages. As I mentioned, it's intended to be pre-processed off-site. Our current site is in Charleston, right under Tobin Bridge off of Medford Street. And that way, they would collect the raw food waste, they would screen it out, they would wind it, and so they bring it to us in a seal truck as a slurry. And—
It's not a slurry, I don't know.
It would be like a copy, cool out.
Yeah, just like a—
It's not a slurry, is it, Doug?
Let's hold on to questions until they finish their presentation, and then we'll take them.
Now, you know, in a bigger picture, down the road, the board of directors also is interested in looking at a full-scale operation where we go beyond the twenty-one tons. Shown on here is the maximum we could get to, which would be fifty to sixty tons. But I believe, Mr. Lasky, anything over twenty-one, we would be looking at diverting the logistics into a water-based operation.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we're looking at is if this experiment, if you will apply the words, what's the permanent arrangement? And the thought has been that we'd have to look very heavily at barging that amount out to the island, either on a roll-on, roll-off barge, where the trucks would go on, and the barge would actually carry the stuff.
The organics, yes. And so also shown on here is the potential benefit. Right now, on the first line there in red, we currently generate about three megawatts of power. At full scale, we have the potential of going anywhere from six to eight megawatts, depending on if we reconfigure our power plant operation. These would require substantial capital investment, so it approaches full-scale very cautiously. And then—
Yeah, we're also looking at—we have a small sewer treatment plant, wastewater plant down in Clinton that we're looking at to utilize there. And this is a trend throughout the country, we have wastewater plants who have the digestors like we do. There's actually one in California that is an energy producer. It not only covers its own needs, but has extra electricity that it sells on the market. I don't think we'll ever get there, but there's the real potential here to make this a very positive thing, not only for the environment, but for the rate payers. I know that you're concerned about the trucks. One of the things—why don't you go to the next one?
This one, I have an option.
Next one. Oh, I've got the next one. All right, why don't you finish up the numbers, and then we'll get to the trucks, how's that?
Okay, and Mr. Lasky mentioned the earlier slides. Currently, we self-generate about twenty-five percent of our electricity, as well as almost all of our heating demand. If we went with full-scale co-digestion, from the numbers we've seen, we could change that three-point-six million to double that to seven-point-two, and you know, almost double the amount of self-generation on our island. So our goal is to continue to strive towards, you know, really, energy independence and looking at the wastewater plant not only as a treatment plant, as a potential energy generator.
And one of the things in our first discussions with the chief and with the town manager— I know it's pretty hard to address it yet— is the concern about eighteen-wheelers. And so the Waste Management has agreed that they would utilize basically a food version of an oil truck. And that's a picture of the truck, like the truck—
That would be the truck.
That's the one, that they purchased. And you can see it's completely sealed, it's a small truck compared to an eighteen-wheeler. It would follow the pre-designated MWRA travel route. And again, the first phase, it would be about three trucks, towards the end of the year, it'd be about nine trucks a day going into the island. And I think one of the things, we have to kind of put that in perspective, what does that mean? But I think the next one, back when the MOU was signed, I think in two thousand and one, it was a projection made of weekly trips, truck trips to the island. This is weekly, not daily. And so there's—the current, and there's with the food waste at the full nine trucks a day per week, this is, remember. We would still be under what had been projected at that time. Now, the follow-up MOU with the city, or the town, excuse me, basically got rid of that kind of matrix and said that, you know, the payment that we make to the town—I can't call them, because they're councils, I want to call you city, it's a town—would be—I'm sorry? You're a city now?
No, it's a town. No, it is the town with us, so we still use the word town.
There's a reason for the confusion. Right, go on, okay? But anyway, there would be an increase in the truck traffic, but we believe it's modest and well within the current MOU. And that MOU was signed a number of years back with the idea that there wouldn't be a defined amount of traffic, it would simply cover all the ups and downs in the plant. And frankly, depending on what the project is, what the time of the year is, whether we're getting heating oil or not, in many ways, I think statistically, this doesn't change in any significant way, the amount of traffic coming in and out of the island. You know, we think it's well within the bounds, and again, and just to put it in—this particular comparison I'm making now doesn't help the people on the neck, and I understand that, but if you take a look at the three or nine trucks a day, I got the mass dot count on the Belle Isle Bridge coming in, and it's about fifteen thousand, three hundred vehicles a day coming over that bridge, and about nine hundred trucks a day coming over. So, you know, in the overall scheme of, you know, it's not a lot, and again, I really, fully understand—
Excuse me, the point is not Belle Isle Bridge.
Well, that's what I said, and I was just going to say it again.
Hold on, we're going to do this in a—everybody will get a chance to speak.
No?
We're going to let them make their presentation, and then we'll have comments from the public. Enjoy.
And I agree with what you said, because that's why I said it initially, and I was just going to say it again. I understand the point, and there's issues down at the point with our trucks and our employees and a whole bunch of things we need to talk about, but in the overall, the bridge, anyway. And again, our thought is, we'll see how this would work and then regroup at the end of the year. That's our plan and our hope. I think that's the last slide, isn't it?
Yeah. Okay, before we open it up, just to sum up what I've heard from the—and what we as councilors have heard, is that the concern is the effect on Wintrop. There's not an awful lot of worry about the savings of energy on Deer Island for MWRA, although we know that theoretically that will affect our rates. What I'm hearing is that we're one community out of fifty-one that's going to benefit from this, and we have the one community that's going to spill the detriment of it. So I think your presentation of showing the energy creation and everything is very valuable, but we need to make the people feel comfortable, if we can, that, you know, that this is an experiment, it is a trial program, it's a pilot program, and as you mentioned, the plan is that if it becomes a bigger program, or if it becomes a permanent program, then we're going to shift to water transportation as opposed to trucking.
Yes, that's our—
That sum it up?
Yes, and if I could, could I respond?
Sure, yeah.
And I want to say this very respectfully. You're right, you're going to take the brunt of those trucks, but you are one of—well, now you're the only community, but you have historically been one of two communities that we make a payment to, a mitigation payment to, for those impacts. And in this calendar, this fiscal year, or calendar year, we've paid, made a payment to the town of seven-hundred-forty-four thousand dollars, which I think puts us right up at the top of your revenue sources. So we understand we have an impact, and we want to do the right thing. And I think beyond that, we have tried at every turn to be good neighbors to the town, and whether it be, you know, helping you with the snow plowing in the big storms, or whether it be helping you with your water sewer folks without heavy equipment when you need it, we've always been there to help with it, and we'll be there to work through this, because I obviously can sense a real frustration here amongst the folks on the neck about the traffic and heating and those things.
And just one other point, we've got to make sure we call it the point, not the neck.
It seems like a net when I drive out, yes.
No, point.
The point, okay, the point.
But also, when I mention, I don't mean to take over the conversation, but when I mentioned, Wintrop is one of the fifty-one, and I realize that—I'm glad you made that point clear, that we're one of two that are getting mitigation. But also, the point is the piece of Wintrop that's getting the hardest hit, so, and probably everybody that's here tonight is from the point, so. Okay, can we open it up to the public? Frank?
I did have one question before—
Frank, you just your name and precinct?
Frank Costantino, president of Wintrop.
Precinct.
And—
Name and precinct.
Name and precinct, too. I'm not I represent myself as a resident of town, but also with the improvement historical association. What's not clear from this presentation is the route that these trucks will be taking. I've been informed by Mr. Gill in about this program that the likelihood is that you'll be coming down from the bridge along Main Street to Levee Street, and then to Shirley Street in order to proceed to Point Shirley. The concern for our association that is representing the historic Dean Wither House, which is located on Shirley Street, and has been seriously impacted over the years by some of the construction trucks that had followed that road back and forth to Deer Island. I also think it's misleading not to mention the fact that you have nine trucks going in there at the optimum delivery of the food waste slurry, but there's also return trip involved, and there's impact in both directions. So there are eighteen trips, not nine. The other thing is that we—the Dean Wither House was built in sixteen thirty-seven, was built by Governor John Wintrop. It was eventually given over to his son, Dean Wintrop, for whom the house is now named. Our association was responsible for the caretaking of that three-hundred-and-fifty-year-old-plus house. That house has been suffering some structural degradation over the years, and we're looking to restore that in a proper fashion, but we don't want to have a losing battle where we have structural repair to the house itself and have it then be degraded once again with the vibration and rumbling of really heavyweight trucks and the kind of motion that would be caused during the course of the delivery of your slurry to Deer Island. We think that there is a really serious concern, because it's not only Wintrop's treasure, it's the Americans' treasure. This is one of the oldest continually occupied houses in the United States. There aren't any others like this. We have been fortunate in the East Coast, or even around Boston, to have other historic houses of similar period of age, but we do not have a house like this here in Wintrop. It was really important that the town council, as well as the residents and the officials of MWRA recognize how valuable this resource is. It's something that our association certainly doesn't want to see compromised, we don't want to see additional damage that is incurred in the house with the natural force of its age, but also the fact that there are, you know, some structural issues that are going to be attended to by our association. So we would really respectfully suggest that the amount of traffic that's being proposed by MWRA would not do our historic house very much good. I know there are other areas of the town that would be likewise impacted, but I don't think the house can really sustain that kind of rumbling movement. It would cause additional vibrations. I don't know if MWRA has actually done a study to perhaps impart some of the vibrational effects that would occur, not only to this historic house, but to any other houses that are on this road that is going to be carrying this amount of slurry back and forth. I'd also like to leave, for the MWRA participants here, some information about the house, and I'll leave these also to the town council and the other residents that would like to have some information about that. And I'll circulate, these are our legal sources, thank you. But I represent nearly three hundred members of our association. We've dedicated a lot of time and a lot of effort to maintaining this house, and also to give thanks to the previous generations of caretakers, as well as members, residents of this town that have looked after this historic structure. So I think you really— So I think it really moves Wintrop to be very, very cautious and very careful about the impact of the truck transportation of this slurry and the likely damaging effects that it could have on this historic house. Another point I wanna mention is that the Dean Wintrop House is within sidewalks distance, quite close to the street itself, so there is concern as far as its proximity to the lane of traffic that is proposed here. So with that, I do wanna let you know that our officers and our members are behind the voice of your objections through my presentation here to MWRA, and hopefully the town council and MWRA will understand.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you for your time.
Dawn?
Thank you. I have a copy of.
Dawn, your name and precinct?
Dawn Manning, nine Elliott, and I am precinct three. And I'm going to hand you a copy of the police report when I was assaulted by a truck driver over the summer for Deer Island. And you can pass it around, and you can have a copy as well. I have a video that I sent to the town as well, when a chemical truck tried to pass the school bus in October. I sent a copy to Mr. McKenna, Chief De La Hanty, went to the superintendent. I don't know who else on the council saw it. But it did go pretty public in town, because the superintendent did send a notice home a couple days later. Anyone caught passing the school bus will have, if there was a picture or anything taken, they would be unticketed, et cetera. I was pretty upset, a couple incidents. I've lived down the point my whole life. The point is not the rest of Wintrop. We do not get fifteen thousand cars down a day. I stand at the bus stop every morning and stop your speeders, because I know which kids are gonna run out and try to catch the bus. I know which way the sun is glaring every day. When you opened up your speech, you said, "We try to manage our rates." So by guessing, I'm thinking that you're managing your rates, because if you keep your electricity rates down, you're gonna keep our fifty-one towns' water rates down? Because is that what you're saying? Is it your rates, so your rates stay down, so our rates stay down? Is that what you're trying to say? So if you bring more energy in to keep your costs down, that's going to eventually reduce our water rates?
It'll hold them down.
It'll hold them down, or it's going to reduce them?
Well, our largest cost is the mortgage payment on the bonds for Deer Island. That's sixty percent of our budget. That's going up steadily for the next several years. What we can do is limit that increase by saving money wherever we can. As I said, we'll cut staff to third, with all the alternative energies. So can I sit here and say against you a reduction? No, I can't say that. Can, will the increases be less than they would have been? Yes.
Okay, so you want me to abuse us more and not really give us anything back? And then I look at this profile, and I'm not really clear, so maybe you can explain it. It says electricity profile, and then total energy profile. Can you tell me the difference between these two?
Electricity is just that, and then energy is heat plus electricity.
So is this what you're creating yourself down Deer Island? This is what your slides showed us?
Yeah, we're creating electricity, but we also create heat as well.
Okay, but what I'm trying to figure out is right here where it says wind and solar. So you're creating five, point five percent solar and one percent wind? And then your total energy profile says zero solar and zero wind?
That's a decimal point.
Okay, so is this how much you're using or creating?
That's how much we're creating.
Because I'm trying.
Versus the total that you use.
Because I'm trying to figure out if you have all that solar and wind power down there, and you said it's very productive on the turbines, why does it say zero and point five and one percent? Because that's very confusing to me, because I've watched all those slip in over the past couple of years on my truck route and through my town and in front of my house. And I haven't seen any of us down the point, or for the rest of Wintrop, get it. So I'm trying to figure out that, and I see the eggs are, you know, lay the golden egg, but I see the smell. I smell the smell that I get, that you guys might not get all the time. So yes, I'm very upset about that. And the traffic, it gets ridiculous when I can't easily put the cord to let my nine and eleven-year-olds walk to the school bus, which is two houses away, because I can't trust not only just your people that work down there, also Wintrop people. They speed, I have no favorites, I stop everybody. If somebody's husband, who's fifty-year-old, worked down the island, and that husband forgot to take their heart medicine in the morning, and they're stuck behind the bus, I don't care, because the kids are more important to me. That's their husband's fault, it happens, it's not my problem, the kids are more important to me.
Okay, on the subject, all right.
So I just, I'm trying to understand why, when we have one road, we have been asking for an SOP for five years. At least five years, my husband and I have owned our house for fifteen years.
What's an SOP?
It's a safety operating procedure. We have hazmat situations as it is. Do we have an SOP? If we tip over coming around that Red House Bend, who's gonna save the point people? Is anybody gonna get us off the point? Because you know what, if you tip over hazmat truck anywhere else in Wintrop, you got an escape route, people, but we don't down the point, who's gonna come get us? Is Mass Four gonna respond, or the Wintrop firefighters? How many Wintrop firefighters have hazmat training? Can you tell me that?
Everyone, which has to get retrained by everyone.
Okay, do we have the materials? Is Wintrop gonna respond?
Yeah, well, Wintrop's gonna respond.
And do we have the materials to respond to a hazmat situation? Or do we have to go to Boston and get those materials?
Well, Boston's in the same predicament we are, I mean, you would talk based on what's going down.
Do we have it? Do we have it on time?
No, every community uses the Mass Hazmat Team. Their regional teams are expensive to keep up, they're on a constant training. We have three members of the state hazmat team on our town. So for a small department, we have as many people trained at a much higher level than most departments do.
So Deer Island has all these chemicals coming in and out of Wintrop, and nobody's gonna save us. How many years, asking for a safety plan? Nobody's gonna evacuate us.
But look at the safety plan in the industry, too. Deer Island's been there long before you went out, and there has not been an incident.
No, I have been here for four, three years.
Let's keep on the subject, we're on the subject tonight of this plant.
Which is more trucks with more hazard, and I wanna know who's gonna get me out.
I haven't interrupted you, and I would ask you not to interrupt me. Let's stay on the subject, the subject tonight. You're very well justified in your concerns, and we hear your concerns. And if there is, if there are things that are happening, you need to report them, and you have reported them. And we need to enforce them, you're absolutely right. At this point, what we're looking at is the pilot program. And we need to feel comfortable that if this is a pilot program, and if it does go through, that it is a pilot program. And if it expands, that it doesn't expand with more trucks.
And I totally feel that. But you're not even dealing with the issues we're dealing with now with the MWRA. I wanted a meeting that got canceled last September, and guess what? You're shoving another program down my throat, and you're not dealing with what we've had all these years.
What meeting was canceled last September?
The MWRA one, that we were gonna talk about water rates and safety issues, but it became too political. And now we're getting another thing shoved down our throat, and you can't even ask answered questions for five years.
Excuse me, Dawn, the MWRA meeting that was canceled last year
Yes.
was for water rates. It had absolutely no other focus. And yes, it was canceled for political reasons. And it was canceled for political reasons because of advice from council.
Okay, maybe it was water rates to you, because that's your concern? My concern is the safety of my family and my children.
Dawn, Dawn.
That's not my concern with the MWRA.
I set that conference, and I canceled that conference. And the purpose of that conference was very, very clear.
And we've been asking for it.
Then asked for another conference. But that conference that was canceled, the purpose, and the stated purpose of that conference was water and sewer rates. It was never, that forum was never broadened. If you would like to have another forum specifically on that, let's do it.
We have, we've asked, we've asked, we've asked, we've asked.
Who have you asked?
Excuse me, we had a forum with Mr. Delvento up the Wintrop Yard Club with Michael Morrison from the MWRA about five years ago about this. We were promised community meetings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Mr. Delvento is our counselor, he was there, were you not, Mr. Delvento?
Yes.
All right, at this point.
And here we are, five years later, more stuff shoved down. You don't have to say anything, I'm done speaking, I've made my point.
Thank you, is there anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Yes, Miss Hager.
Gina Ceruley, precinct three. And Daddy Ostrup would have. We have, we were promised that we would have a meeting with the MWRA over the years, so many, so many months, that was five years ago. Of course, we were also promised that when they first put up the plant, they were gonna be our friends. Well, you're not our friends, I'm sorry, you're not our friends. This is our town, we are here to protect it. Why do we have to take the garbage? When this was first came out in May, there was an article in The Globe that said, "Oh, but don't worry about it, because they're gonna be barging it in." I don't see why you have to come through our town. I grew the day that they opened up, that they closed, sorry, that they closed the dock. We were not attached to Deer Island, Deer Island is Boston, real Wintrop. They closed it during the Second World War because we had a fort down there. And I'm sorry that it opened. But you have never, never connected and looked around and seen what happened. This morning, when I was coming home, a truck that looked very much like this truck, although very big, came down the street, got into not Church Square, but in what we would call Pulseris Market. He took up the whole street. I had to practically go on the sidewalk, because the car was so long that none of us could get by it. That's what we face, and now you're asking us to face another nine trips a day? Put your garbage someplace else, or put it, or barge it in. Do not put this on us, it's not fair and it's not right. I don't care how much money you give us. You kill one person, or hurt a child, or anything, that's not worth anything. This is our town. Go to Boston, treat, put it all in Boston. It does nothing for us, as far as I'm concerned. And yes, no, you have never been. Marie Turner, many years ago, at a meeting, turned around, and she was on the board, and said, "Get this right, dear, not our friends, dear." I don't know who represents us from Wintrop visiting you all the time, then why wasn't this brought up to us? All of a sudden, we find out they're coming in by truck, instead of coming barging in. So we were sitting there thinking, okay, they're gonna barge it in, we can accept it. But no, we cannot accept this, it's one road. There was a fire down there last year. Four hours we were cut off. Yes, we choose to live there, but you have to remember, that's our choice. But it's not your choice to block us off from the rest of Wintrop. We have a right to, not just us, it'll go through all of Wintrop. But it's not going through Somerset, it's not going through Botlet Road, Plummer, or any of those roads, or any of the side roads. But it's gonna come right down the one road that connects us to the rest of the world.
Thank you, Mrs. Ceruley, I'm sorry. Mr. Rosemont?
David Osborne, precinct two. I first wanna tell Mr. Lasky that you have a very, very cooperative staff. I am a real pain in the back. Mr. De West, Mr. O'Brien, everybody in your staff has been very cooperative with me, and I wanna at least give you that right now. But I'm concerned a little bit about your credibility, because you praise the Wintropines, and the Wintropines, in my opinion, have an abject failure. Even you have stated, "Nothing but problems." So, I mean, but you're telling us one thing, and the reality is a different thing. But when you're talking about nine truckloads coming in a week about this time next year, you're only talking about eighteen truckloads. Trucks gotta come in, and they've gotta leave. So it's eighteen, hey? And if the people of this town knew what a full operation was as far as trucks in and out, you'd probably need an escort home. Because I understand the future is barging. But my question is, we're speaking around tax, I mean, savings for ratepayers. Veil will never, for this project, ever be retaining savings at all. By the time this ever gets into full operation, you're under the twenty and thirty million dollar equipment purchase and capital costs that. If you make three million dollars a year on this, we're ten and twelve years down the road to break even. So this thing about making, or keeping costs low, if you need two and a half million dollars that bad to keep the energy costs low, I'd give you the approval to put a dollar fee for the two and a half million ratepayers. You may put an annual fee on their bill, and that will give you your two and a half million dollars that you need. And you can take this program and put it in the harbor. I don't wanna see one single truck coming to this town. But like I said, we're dealing, we're talking around issues here. We're not talking real specific issues. I have the advantage of a lot of people here. I've seen a lot of the cost analysis, thank you for Mr. De West and Mr. O'Brien. And numbers I hear tonight don't coincide with what I have. But the problem I have is, is this your visual, is this your vision of the future? Is your vision having barges filled with, whatever, tank, however they bring that from Charleston into our cleaned-up harbor on a regular rotating basis, three in, four in, three in, back out, in our harbor, across from the Oakley Courthouse and Veritex, Del Frisco's Convention Center? Is this your vision of the Boston Harbor? Is to have waste management barging along at one mile an hour? Not one day a week, seven days a week, forever? I mean, is this it? But the other thing is now, that I'm concerned about is, you are taking, I'll do one more comment, and then I'll have one final statement. You're taking a plant that we have paid billions of dollars for, and you are now looking to use more capacity. And when you do that, amenity breaks down, parts need to be replaced, more labor, more maintenance. All those costs will never bring this to an equal. We'll never see the savings that you claim to be. Now, I'll make my last statement, and I could go on forever, I just got to. But this, my final analogy is, this program should be permanently shut down purely because of basic common sense. Ratepayers have Deer Island exactly where they want it. And they have paid the bill, they have paid billions, and will continue to pay billions to keep it as it is. And what is it? It's a facility that is state-of-the-art. It's a water supply that has redundancy. It has main and backup utility energy systems to handle all emergencies. Exceptions, I see, exceptional award-winning water quality. Expensive but proven technology that provided water safety and sustainable continuity of product. You have extra capacity for the treatment of water in sewage, as well as for new member expansion. New member expansion has been the one area that you, MWRA's always talked about, is how to gain revenue and lower costs for ratepayers. That's the one primary source that you should follow is expanding the community. But now you've superseded that, now you're bringing in a product that digesters were never made to do. Now you also have a staff of well-paid, knowledgeable, educated, able, motivated in service, cost-cutting and planning people that are second to none. That's what we have paid for. We are right where we want, we have digestors that are not running the capacity. I like that idea. I like the fact that, right where we are, it's expensive, but it's perfect. It allows expansion for communities, all emergencies of water usage or whatever. But instead, there's plans on ramping this thing up for that Deer Island plant to take three hundred thousand tons of food, organic and turdum. One-third of what is expected. Three hundred thousand, not pounds, gallons, tons down the road, when everything's going well. And if that's, we never bargained for that. And I just wanna know that, I'll leave it at that, but I'm very concerned, Mr. Lasky, the lack of input, lack of inquisitiveness, lack of interrogation, lack of knowledge of advisory board people. And Paul's the only one I can see who comments regularly at the board of directors meeting. These people sit and do not question this kind of thing. And they don't get into the costs, they don't get into the expenses that are down the road. And they don't get into the costs, they don't get into the expenses that are down the road. They may, but it's not public. And I, I just am concerned about that, and I just want to express my feelings about, this should not be a program that goes on one day.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Any further, yes?
Hi.
Just your name and precinct, please.
Patty Murphy, Precinct Three. I live on Tap's Ave, on the corner of the stop sign. I am so tired of seeing trucks. They come down Elliot Street, they stop right in front of my house, they can't make the bin. They come up on the sidewalk and come down. They shake my house. I have cracks on cracks on cracks in my house. And I'm just tired of it. The chemical trucks, I'm afraid they're going to come in my yard if they tip, because when they hit the sidewalk, they, you know, they tend to sway. And what's going to happen to me? I can't get over, I got a small house. And Bill over here, they're almost in his living room...
Are you right across from Bill?
Right across the street. I mean, thank God I have a big yard in front of my house, but still, it's, you know, I'm tired. Yeah, you were over there, yeah, I mean, I, I had a call, MWRA, for somebody to come down because the sidewalk is getting mangled, and it's just like, it's, it's just horrible. It's horrible.
We, we need to be sure that we, that we have enforcement, that's what we need to do. If we're, if we're stuck with this, we need, we need to be sure of that. And we need, we need to have you document and call us.
I'm, I'm afraid, you know.
Don't be afraid, no, no. Oh, you, I thought you meant you were afraid to call. Somebody who hasn't been hurt first, is there anybody else who hasn't been hurt?
Just, you know, we all have to live, I don't think anyone gets more complaints than I do, not just with MWRA, but Fort Banks, Main Street, River Street, you name it. We don't have enough people to settle to the force every street in town. So we take the complaints and we try to address the complaints, but don't forget, these trucks and these incidents are happening when most of our people are tied up with school crossings and other duties, so it's difficult to manage. We do have a very good relationship with Nick Sumati from the island, who gets every police report that we generate, every accident that we generate, every citation that we generate from MWRA traffic. John Letery, when he was down here, issued letters to today's workers as far as their behavior and traveling on what went on with the roadways, and that they would follow up with personnel actions if they were found to be cited. So the relationship is an open one from a police standpoint, we'll continue to work on that relationship. This program is still under evaluation from my office. By no means did I give it a thumbs up or down at this point. One of the things we're looking at is truck traffic, how many trucks are currently over the last three to five, three to five years, and what would this increase? Going back to 2001, you know, when, when the height of the construction was high is one thing, but what was the recent history of that, and are we going to increase from that recent history? Are we staying the same? Are we down, are we decreasing the truck traffic? There was a lot of companies bidding for this, I did meet with several companies early on, and told them that we would push, you know, for escorted vehicles. This company didn't meet with me, they awarded the bid, which kind of threw a, a snafu into their bidding process because they didn't come up with me with us. So we, we should be looking at, and we will continue to work with MWRA to look at, whether the current truck route is sufficient to hold any trucks, including any additional trucks for the slurry. And what is the best route to travel through Winter? Is the current truck route the best route to travel through with them? Which, you know, it's got to be one, but I'm worried about the entire community, and not just one section of the community. That's my job is to advise the town manager and the council on what the best routes are to take. So we will have specially trained truck team people that we're trying to get trained through the state police currently. That's been a priority of mine for a couple of years, those truck team trainings are hard to get into, and they're usually reserved for state troops. So by no means have we done looking at all this, the town manager, myself, the fire chief. I think it was important for me to make that statement here tonight, because I don't want people to think that we're not doing anything, and that we're sitting here being quiet because of ulterior purpose or more, so I just want to put that...
I just want to make it clear that when I, when I use the word enforcement, that wasn't a shot at you, because I know you're, you're working, doing more with less, and I'm not meaning to tax your people, I'm looking for MWRA to, to give us further protection, some, some alternative to enforcement without taxing your already overtaxed enforcement duty.
I didn't take it as a shot, I just wanted to explain...
Okay, but I just want to make that clear.
I think it was important, we're going to explain that if we do cite someone, if we do have an accident, if we do have a police obligation such as Miss Manning said earlier, that that gets reported immediately and directly to Nick, who, who goes up to the chain with it, and say, "Okay, we just had an accident in each corner with an MWRA truck three weeks ago." That, within that hour of the accident, the report was submitted. So I, I don't want to think that, that we're not in communication, just that we're not doing publicly. We are working together, we are in communication, and we're trying to do our best to control the situation.
There was a gentleman in the back. Your name?
My name's John Stasiel, I'm Precinct Three. Here all right. I mean, I've been down the Point for 35 years, and I've lost trees, beautiful, it's wrought iron and brick fence, it's all cracked from the trucks that come up on the sidewalk and then down into the street. And when you make complaints and you say anything, it's nobody's fault, and all I know is my property's just falling apart, we cannot handle any more trucks down there. And if they're going to make this capital investment, half a million, two million, five million dollars to start this thing up with, new trucks and everything, what's, where's the incentive to go to the barge? And if that was the incentive, then why aren't they bringing the sodium microchloride in the barges now? Why do we need eight trucks going down there, unescorted, flying down there, they don't even stop at the stop sign? And I'm in that intersection, Patty's on the one side, Bill's on the other, and I'm on the other corner. So you've got three people down there, and one suggestion, maybe get a camera up on that pole right in the intersection, going, looking right down at the island. It may be enough of a diversion to slow people down and know that they're being videoed. At least the police can see what's going on down there, because there's drug stuff going on down the island, and there's no policing. Not that, it's like you said, you're stretched thin, but you've got trucks going down there unescorted, and it's not just them, it's contractors, it's big cranes, they run your trees over, they destroy your property, and the police have always chasing them to get a resolve.
Thank you, Mr....
Just to clear one thing up while we're on TV, the drug problem, is that in the public a lot? We're not recurring that.
No, that's, that's the state police down there, but I talked with Officer Rockout, and she said that, yeah, it goes on all the time, the cars go, young kids, they go flying down the island, and then two or three minutes later, they come racing back up again. So they do their deal, and then they're out of the Point. But, I mean, they're really flying 50, 60 miles an hour up there, and there's nothing you can do to stop.
Down that road, Tom.
Bill, he's out there on the porch screaming at them, "Slow down."
They don't stop.
And they don't. So we need some sort of enforcement mechanism, whether it's a camera, something to, to make these people respect our neighborhood, because this is a family neighborhood. I love it down the Point, and you can't, you can't ask for a better place to live. But right now, we're under siege again. I like what, I like what Dave Osborne said about the plant, that it's doing what it's supposed to be doing, there's a little bit room for more for capacity, that can probably lower our rates by bringing more cities and towns through it. Don't start another pilot project that you don't even know what's going, it's going to do to those digesters.
Thank you, John.
Can you say one thing, Mr. President? I drink MWRA water, I haven't necessarily drank it punch yet. But I would like to say officially, nobody worries about Winter more than I do seven days a week, okay? When it came time, and speaking of Mrs. Ceruley's statement, that Marie Turner never said that they were our friend, I think before she retired, because nobody got in more trouble since I've been chief, looking for the MWRA's help without going through her first. And I learned that over my seven years as chief, that there was a way that you went about it. But she told me time after time, they are good friends to this town. And I'll just end it with one statement, when I grew up as a child in this town, I was told, "Hey, Mom, I'm going up the beach, be careful when you cross the street, and don't go in the water. Whatever you do, don't go in the water." You people that live down the Point, we're talking about, I shouldn't say this, getting a ferry and let people discover you're a beach. You're a beach, you wouldn't even let your kids put their feet in the water. I feel bad for this pilot program, yes, I did vote for it as a member, I'm not going to hide behind that. This kind of a chess game played at that table, because 51 communities just like us, they don't want to spend a dime, they couldn't care less about Winter. We're trying to hold on what we have, because when we finally say, "There is no more mitigation for Winter," you're going to have three less cops, you're going to have three less firefighters, you're going to have one less teacher, and Dawn's going to be back fighting for Terry, for me, and for the schools. I think it's worthy of the opportunity, your complaints, everybody here tonight was gentlemen and ladylike, we need to hear those complaints. The chief has cameras we can put up. I look, again, to thank the MWRA for the done for Director Cal, the done for us, the done for the town, because if this town was the way it was, I've been on the fire department as long as you've lived here, I remember when we used to line the mud flats every low tide, so the houses down Point truly didn't turn colors, because the sewage was so bad. So as much as we vilify them tonight, they've done a great job, and I'm grateful for it.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Mill.
You know, I, you know, no matter what happens with whatever mitigation you do, people down the Point do take the brunt of that, and that's a, that's a, you know, I mean, no one doesn't feel bad about that. But just, what about addressing the speeding with some cameras that you guys could give as a nice little reward? Or maybe you could, you know, talk to the people at the other company there that bring in the sludge, and they can hook up to our, you know, system, so we can maybe, you know, at least alleviate some of that issue and some of the issues that these people are seeing, and justify them, and get a camera. I know we don't ticket off of cameras, but my guess is that if you took a picture and you sent it to each person that was speeding down there, they probably changed their approach, it'd be a nice little, you know, thing for the people down there, and just to throw it in, wouldn't cost you a lot of money.
But let me, let me just say this, we can't defend the indefensible. And if our vendors, our truckers are, you know, not abiding by the rules, riding on the sidewalk, we're not going to defend that, and we're going to try to get to the bottom of it. And if we have to fine them, if we have to debar them and tell them they're not welcome, we will do that. As far as our employees, we have taken that very, very seriously, as was stated, we issued a very stern written warning, I guess, to all our employees on the island, indicating to them that their conduct reflects poorly on the MWRA, and that if they are in fact violating the law, we would subject them to discipline, which lawyers weren't quite sure we had the ability to do that once they're out of the gate and off the clock. But we, we really have worked hard, we've actually bought a portable radar that showed the speed, or let the town borrow it for a while, is my recollection, we now have a permanent one there. If there's any reasonable things that, that we can do, we will do it, and we'll issue, we'll talk to all our vendors again tomorrow, one second, Dave. And, and you know, again, I don't know, I've talked with Chief Flanagan a lot about the public and, and, you know, we have, and I called the neck tonight, that's because we have a facility down in Quincy called Houz Neck, and we have a Citizens and Advisory Committee down there that meets every six months on, in the plant down at that island, and we go through the issues. How did the summer go? What about tra, they have traffic issues down there, they have kids leaving patches, they have the issues of drugs and whatever. And we sit down, and we talk it all out, we come up, you know, and, and sometimes the city council comes, they're always welcome. If you'd like to formalize that, if we're formalized committee, I can assign a staff person, we could do that, and, and, you know, just attach it, we can visit the sites, and then you have a point of contact, and you have the ability to come in and talk. Like I said, we do it down there, a spring meeting and a fall meeting. If you wanted to start off with quarterly meetings, or three a year, we can do that, whatever works. And again, like I said, I've spent a lot of time on the phone with the chief, I've talked in with my wife sometimes, trying to deal with some of these issues, but, you know, we can do that, if it's the, if the council, Mr. President and the council, if that's something that you'd like us to do, we can, we could clearly do that.
Are you ready?
Can I say?
Yes, go ahead, Gina.
He did say that to me many years ago, maybe over the years, she wanted to be...
Hey, tenderize.
But she did, she made it, she gave a little bit. First of all, whatever you've said has been said to us for so many years, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, we're going to catch the guys, we're gonna do, and nothing has been done. So for us to believe it, it's very difficult. We, you know, I mean, year after year, we've heard the same thing, we're going to have these meetings, we're going to get together, we'll, they'll notify you, we're gonna... Anyway, it's just, it just gets to the point, we cannot take this, and what I believe you said, Mr. Gill, was, we are not committed to this, or something to that, sometimes I don't get quite the words with my hearing aids.
I'm not sure what you said.
But we're not, we're not definitely, we have to take this, or, you know, or still negotiating?
I don't remember what you said.
You may comment like that.
Pilot program, yes, yes, yes.
Or whatever, and we, you know, we don't have, well, you know what, I think it's a sin if we get stuck with this, I'm sorry. We are more important, this town is more important, and certainly, the people in it are more important than the garbage and the destruction that these trucks will do. All I had to do today was turn a little bit, and I wouldn't be here tonight.
My commitment and the commitment of this council is not to MWRA or 51, 50 other communities. Our commitment and our responsibility and our love is to the community that we live in.
That's what I'm asking you.
And that's, that's what we are, that's where we put our most effort and our most sincerity is to the people of Winter, because I, like Dawn, was born here. I won't say I lived here all my life, because I'm not dead yet, but I've never lived anywhere else, and I brought my family up here.
My name is David, you have a name, so I've been here since...
Mine says Winter Community Hospital, and so are all my brothers and sisters, so... But I have that, I have that commitment, and we have that commitment. However much we can do, you know, we're not God Almighty, so we don't have the power of the whole thing.
No, no.
But we have, but I think that, that tonight's input was very valuable and appreciated. And I think that Fred's comment about ties in with Dawn's comment about we were supposed to have meetings, well, let's have them, let's get somebody to get in touch with Fred.
We've only been waiting 27 odd years.
Let's, let's initiate it. If there's anybody who can initiate it, and who's powerful, and doesn't let go, she's sitting to your right. And I don't mean, I don't mean to point her out, nominate her.
Thanks, dear.
I know, I know you know her. But let's get that going, let's let MWRA feel like they do in Houz Neck. I never knew until tonight that you do that in Houz Neck, Mr. President.
Yeah, and I can say, I'm trying to think of the weather, we could set something up in the middle of March when the weather's broken, if you want, we could do it earlier, if you want, we'd have it down the island, and, and do it at night, and, you know, whatever works for people.
We did have one meeting down the island, many, many years ago, when Tom, I was there with Tom Riley and a few other people, that was many years ago.
Counselor B. Iger.
So if the long-term plan, if this worked out, would be to barge everything in, why, why wouldn't it be more reasonable to do, barge it in as a pilot program, so that you, so you can see the pitfalls on a smaller scale than, than try and do another larger pilot of all this more, I mean, it would seem more reasonable, and I think that the people from the Point would feel that you're actually genuine in looking long-term to barge things in, if, if you did it that way, versus trucking it in and then coming and saying, "Well, we're going to do it now in a way we've not done it before." And I think, you know, is it reasonable to, you know, to try and do this pilot, barging in?
Well, let me, let me if I could, because I think this also goes to part of what Mr. Osborne said. This is an experiment. So far, all we have is a bench test, the University of Amherst, on a bench, literally beakers, a gallon of this, a gallon of that, and a scientist figuring out how it's going to work, and then the scientists are there. What we need to do to find out if this is feasible, and what's really going to happen, is to do a shakedown cruise, if you will, or a science experiment in those big digestors for very small amounts of quantity. So the cost would be prohibitive for us to get a barge and pay to bring a small amount in, and we don't even know if it's going to work. You know, I mean, what you're saying sounds reasonable, we have to see if it works. If it works, then you do the math, as, as Mr. Osborne said, then you have to do the calculations, what is the payback, what is the wear and tear? What else, you know, this is a big initiative from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, is the Commonwealth going to step up and provide us with a subsidy, grants, they've done it already, we've received two grants from the state, because they really want us to do this. So they're, they're putting some money in this to see, on the renovations and on the bench test, they've put some money in so far.
You know, we understand that, but I mean...
Through the chimes.
Sorry. So we understand that, but, you know, even if, so you're saying these, you know, nine loads each day would be prohib, you know, but what if you only ran a barge and did some sort of a storage and ran it once a week with this large, I don't know, I'm just saying, is there, is there a way to accommodate the community more, I guess?
I think we...
Rather than the 51.
I don't think it's feasible, I don't think it's feasible for the test, but that's part of the whole equation, you know, can we barge it, how do we barge it, what do we need to do to renovate that part of the facility, who owns the barge? And, and, I don't know, there's a lot of questions, there's more questions than answers at this point. It's a concept, we know it's worked elsewhere, we know it worked in a science experiment out in Mass, and, and, so what we're just trying to do is see if it works and at what level, and then we can do all the various... then we can do all the various calculations. I don't know if Dave or Dan is up.
Okay, is there any further comment from the public? Yes, Chief.
Peter Gill, Keith Manning, precinct three. I married to that awesome woman. For a long time.
I'll forget about that, she's next Friday.
I'm gonna take your word with it. I'm gonna work with her, and I'm gonna make a phone call to you, and we will get this committee started. I will, my name's Keith Manning. I will vilify me.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Keith.
All right, sir.
Somebody in the back, was there another hand in the back? Yes, John.
Johnny, precinct one.
We have a lot of precincts for a small city.
We have six. Small town, Fred.
I have a question, you made a comment. When these trucks come in, what's the chemical composition of this here? Are there hazardous waste in there? Are there heavy metals? What happens if we have an accident or a spill? And you have a plan that would reassure us on that? And the second thing, I think a lot of what you're hearing is from a part of the town that's heavily impacted. And a town that's heavily impacted, it's not just you, it's the airport, it's a lot of other factors, and there's a great deal of frustration. I know you've worked with the town, but you came knowing what you would do, I think the meeting's a good first step, and maybe we would do better if this was more neighborly in a lot of ways, and that there was consideration, not just from you, but across the board on council, to understand this kind of a situation. It's environmentally important. It's important to the government. How do we make it important to the people living in Winthrop is the real question.
Thank you, John. And thank you, everybody, again, for coming, and for your comments. Mr. Hubbard.
May I?
If you're brief, because we've pretty much hashed it through.
I've been watching this on television.
Okay, all right.
And I agree with most of the people that said here on the problems that are involved. And I, and I agree very much with Frank Costantino, who talked about the problems that we've had with the trucks going by the Dean Winthrop House, and so forth. So I am nothing more than one driver of four thousand in town, and I have experienced two problems with these trucks. I don't know how many hundreds of other people must have experienced problems. But I was parked in front of the Dean Winthrop House one day, and I was inside, and one of the trucks came by, and sidespiked the side of my car, went through the rearview mirror. Fortunately, there was a nice lady who was walking along at the time, who came in and told me about it. She had gotten the name and the number of the truck. I went out to Deer Island and located the party, and they did take care of it. But they didn't stop when it hit, it just kept on going. The other thing I wanted to mention was, and I think a couple of other people have talked about it a little bit, is the fact that we do have one-way streets in this town. We were supposed to have police escorts, and I was coming home from Deer Island one day with Mr. Dimes, and we'd been walking around Deer Island, we were coming down, and we got down to where it's half to have new approaches, Surety Street. That's a one-way street. And coming at me was this huge chlorine truck, which pulled up in front of me and stopped, and so I stopped, obviously. And the guy said, you'll have to get out of my way, and I said, why? And he said, well, I've gotta get out to Deer Island. And I said, why don't you go out like everybody else does, where, follow the path of streets? He says, well, I can't maneuver those. I have to go this way. And I said, well, where's your police escort? He said, well, I couldn't be bothered to go and see if I could find it. So I said, well, I'm not gonna move. So I picked up my cell phone, and I called the police. And the gentleman that came out was excellent. He came out, and he looked at the situation, and what he did was said, you'll have to move and let the truck go by. And I said, I realize that. But he said, I'll tell you what I'll do. I will escort him all the way from here, out to the island, and I'll wait for him, and I'll escort him back again, which is what's supposed to be done anyway. So I just wanted to throw out the fact that there are a lot of problems that occur. If I have two of them happen to me out of four thousand people in this town that drive, then obviously, there must be a lot of others out there. Thank you.
We, we talked about a little bit that earlier, that we need to address the enforcement issues. Thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
Are you not gonna talk?
I would like to, but I gotta take some of this time.
Yes, Counselor.
Just a quick question, is there an escort policy that the town has that?
No, that was in the older mitigation agreements. The newer mitigation agreements said we require a police escort, and that was removed from negotiations.
Any further questions from the council? Yes, Counselor.
Actually, first thing I wanna do is, and I know, I wanna thank Fred. Fred is one person, one thing about Fred, first thing I'm gonna be nice to him, is he does show up, and he doesn't know what he's talking about, and he is the director, he could send somebody else, but he does actually, when we want him, he does come in. And he's very responsible for taking calls. So I think, I'm pretty confident we're gonna have that committee set up.
We have a word.
With a little luck.
We'll set it up for permanent, every six months or three months, wherever they want it.
And, you know, so we'll be working with, on that. But the one thing, as you know, there is a huge concern. I mean, it's a tough, it's a tough location, and these three folks live, well, three groups live right in the heart of it. The situation is, is the corner. Have we, and I'm not advocating for this thing, my, my whole problem is, if you go to a smaller truck, there's more trips. So we're looking at about an eighty thousand pound truck, seventy, ninety thousand pounds, if I'm doing my math correct, seven thousand gallons, nine pounds a gallon. And this truck looks like it has a fairly good wheelbase to it.
Straight tri-axle.
Yeah, have we, have we test driven this on this route yet, to see if it makes that corner?
They're very similar in size to home heating oil trucks.
Yes, this is a large.
Same.
We can do that, we can have the vendor.
We can test it. Hold it. To the chair, one conversation at a time.
Can we do that witnessed by those two gentlemen, their representatives, so we can see what this corner actually takes? This, whether we go with this or not, there needs to be some redesign, something has to be done, and we've talked about it on and off over the years. And I don't know what it is, because there's just no real estate to do any geometry on to get it to work. But I'd really like to see this, you know, if they can make this corner without, without jumping the curve, setting off in front of Johnny's house and, and dumping off Murphy's curb.
It'd be nice to have community involvement in that.
But if, you know, if we can get at least a test drive on this thing, it would be good. I mean, I haven't given anything that's green, basically, including money. But the problem we have is the impact, looking at a fifty percent increase in truck traffic from the numbers that were given to us. We got eighty.
Fifty-five points.
Eighty-three trips, eighty-four trips, to one twenty-nine, one thirty trips. It's about a fifty percent increase, give or take, the math. And which is my biggest concern, and I just don't know where we go. I mean, like the idea, the concept of doing something with, with the material, because it is gonna be a product that's gonna start being available all over the place at the end of the year. But finding a way to get it there without trucks would be a lot nicer. I don't know if there's any pipe capacity, or anything on that idea, where we could have a pumping station, run it from a remote location. Because if this does work, we are looking at, and I'll be honest with you, I like you guys, the barge concept, either we're gonna go, either we're gonna look at doing the barge program with everything else, too. We need major rehab coming up, there's always big material coming in, so if we had the barge system working, that'd be one thing, but it doesn't appear that the, the barge system is gonna really, unless this becomes very, very productive, is gonna fall into place. So, I don't know, I mean, how, how can we get it there without trucks?
That's gonna be difficult to service.
You know, that's. What's that?
I was gonna say, that's gonna be difficult during the pilot. And then once we see what it can do, and what the numbers are, that's when we really get down to the brass tacks on, okay, what's this gonna cost? How much does the barge cost? You know, who owns it, how's it work? Those are the things that, what we need to see is, what is it gonna produce? And that's what we're hoping to do in this pilot, to see what it produces, and see what the potential is, and then sit down and shop in our pencils, and then obviously come back here and, and through the chief about what it's all gonna be.
Counselor Bunkhore.
Yeah. I've been grew up down at Point, and I know the problems that we have down at Point. I don't think, I thank you for coming here, and for what you have done, in helping us get the sand off the beach once a year, but I think we need to do that more often than once a year.
Just as long as the final doesn't end up in the low tide.
Right. The, I have to be in agreement that I don't think we need another truck in this town. I mean, we're the end result of everybody's storage in, in your entire capacity of fifty-one cities and towns. Every single bit of that storage comes to us, we already have that. We're having the chemical trucks going through. We don't need these additional fifty percent increase in trucks. And I would hope that you wouldn't wait till the end of the pilot program to start working on getting a barge in, or letting this stuff go through the sewer system. Maybe that's a possibility as well. If you can't put a new piping system, maybe this stuff can go right in through the store sys, sewer system and not be trucked through our roads. I hope you're gonna look at that. I hope, I think that this is a violation of our MOU that we have, and if you're going to do this, even in a pilot program, we have to sit down and look at the MOU. And there has to be some additional mitigation as to what there is now.
Counselor Seif.
And again, I echo what most of the council has said, as well as the people down at Point. You said a full scale would be between fifty and sixty tons to bring it up. What happens if that break-even point doesn't allow you to consider barging in? Then we're stuck with maybe profitability, however, but not enough to, you know, to bring a barge in, and then with, then we have to settle.
One conversation at a time, please.
That fifty percent increase in traffic all the time. And that's something that's a concern. We're talking about ultimately, you know, being able to pay, pay for the, you know, for the product to be delivered. But if ultimately it doesn't end up coming by barge, then we're stuck with something in between, and I think that's what they're all concerned about, as well as myself.
Or we don't proceed, that's what we have to figure out.
Chief.
Mr. President, the only good thing addressing your problem, Counselor, is that our mitigation process, the end of our mitigation is running concurrent with their one-year pilot. You know, kind of walking the fence. The new verbiage in the new contract could address trucking.
Thank you. Counselor Beirian.
So this experiment you're talking about to get the, the data you need, is nowhere else in the country is doing this type of slurry to, into these egg things?
No, there are, there are a number, it's, you know. Growing interest in this, really, trying to extract the energy from the food waste that's normally going to a landfill, and that energy's being wasted. So that's the driving factor. So part of that initial study, the paper study, is we looked at other sites around the country, many which are much further ahead of us. But we wanted to take it in stepwise fashion, and that's, that's the degree of approval we got from the board.
So do the, do the numbers from these other sites that are at a much farther pace than you, does that allow you to extrapolate that this somehow could be economically feasible to, at a larger level, to do barges, not?
Yeah, initially on paper. Unfortunately, Deer Island's a unique setting, where it's way at the end of a small neighborhood. Some of the other large plants happen to be right off main, you know, freeways.
Off the interstate.
Yes, they're a much different situation than we're faced here.
Like in Clinton or something.
Okay, we're gonna wrap this up. If you haven't heard yet from Counsel, Maroni, and we're gonna go back.
I have it, not on this.
I know. Counselor Maroni.
You know, I, I just wanted to make a statement that made itself evident to everyone that comes from Winthrop, that you, you mentioned that it's cost prohibitive to, to barge in these nine trucks. But, you know, what's cost prohibitive to the people of the Point, the people of Winthrop, is the quality of life issue, that, you know, with these additional trucks. And I, you know, once again, and not to beat a dead horse, you really have to take a better look at the transportation.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Yes, Ms. Alaski. We are trying to promote Winthrop. We're trying to do everything we can to promote it, to bring, you know, people in to see that what a beautiful, you know, seaside community this is. I mean, we've, you know, invested in a ferry, and we're, we're working on a program with Walk Winthrop, and, you know, it almost seems counterproductive that we're trying to beautify the town and make it better, and lure people in to see, to see what a beautiful town we have, and then once you get them here, all they're gonna see is truck after truck after truck, going down along our beaches, you know, right across the public landing where your ferry comes in. You know, it, it doesn't help us. I know we get a mitigation package, we have a lot of roads, a lot of sidewalk work, I mean, that money doesn't go all that far, price out the cost of putting on, putting down a new, a new street. I know a lot of people in this town would like to see, you know, some kind of like a reduced rate for them, because out of the fifty-one communities, we're the ones that are getting the brunt of, of all of this. And the other communities are enjoying the clean, beautiful water and the clean harbors, you know, just like everyone else. But they're not dealing with the day-to-day activity and the trucks and all, you know, all of this that's going on. So we're trying to make Winthrop better, this doesn't help us at all, this actually kind of hurts us. And I think you've heard it from so many people. And that's why they're so upset, and they're so, you know, we feel like we've put up with so much all these years, and I know you're trying to be, you know, a good neighbor and help us out and everything, but it, it just doesn't seem like there's enough there for us, so.
Thank you, Counselor. I think we'll close the, the hearing down, and I appreciate, or the presentation down, I appreciate you people coming down, and I more appreciate you people coming in to, your input was very valuable, and although the subject wasn't the most pleasant, I think the input was, was good to be heard and vented. So let's keep this moving, and keep Winthrop the, Winthrop's worth of a nice place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Gill.
Thank you. Thank you, Lawrence. Moving on. Would anybody like to take a rest?
Open the door for about five minutes.
Let's say five minutes, open the door.
Yes.
Just open the door.
Yeah. That's all. Okay, turning to regular session. Public comment.
Kind of thinned out a little.
Done. Um, committee reports. Finance Committee, Counsel Delvento, Vice President Delvento.
Okay. Mr. Roll a second here. You wanna go first?
All right, we'll come back to you. Counsel Delvento, you ready?
Finance Committee had a meeting last night in the hearing room. At 6:30, in attendance was Counsel Sanford, Counsel Luteri, Counsel President Gill, Tim Gordon, Jim McKenna. And I think Counsel Mail made part of the meeting. On the agenda was the modification of the language for the MSBA bond. The motion was read, the, the motion of 12314 was read into the minutes by the chair, the motion by Counsel Sanford, seconded by Counsel Luteri to move forward to the full council with recommendations of positive action. It was explained by Tim Gordon. There's a question by Counsel Luteri about the need to amend the previous action. The answer by Mr. McKenna was that it required to satisfy the MSBA desire to have figure up, figures updated due to potential cost increases to, due to new building elevation requirements. It was a roll call vote, and it was, it was unanimous. Counsel Luteri, Sanford, and Delvento voted yes. The next item was the free cash stabilization policy, which all of the councils have. And there was a motion by Counsel Sanford, seconded by Counsel Luteri to move forward to the full council for positive action. There's a 2014 free cash distribution, which relates to the free cash stabilization policy. There were five motions in all that were presented on January 23rd to the council. There's a motion by Counsel Sanford, seconded by Counsel Luteri to move all forward to the full council with a positive action. There's an unanimous vote on that. And there's also an item of rescinding unused authorized borrowing. Over the years dating back, some of them over 10 years, there have been different bonds authorized, different borrowing actions authorized by the, by the town, be it town meeting or the council, and all those funds were not required to be, to be bonded or borrowed. And it's just to clean up the books, in order to rescind the unused borrowing, we need a, a council action. So that was also moved to the council for full action, for positive recommendation. Some of those items are gonna come up as motions later in the meeting tonight.
Thank you. Rules and Ordinance, Counsel Valcour.
The Rules and Ordinance Committee meeting was held February 3rd of 2014 at 8:11 PM in the E.B. Newton School. Present with the committee members, myself, Counsel Veroni, Counsel Delvento, also President or Counsel President Peter Gill, Councilors Callar, Sanford, Mail, and our Town Manager, Jim McKenna, CFO Tim Gordon, the Chief De La Hanty, Chief Flanagan, and our Hearing Officer, Mike De Luise, and one person of the public, Scott Mava. There were two motions that came before the Rules and Ordinance Committee. One was to designate the Cumming School as the voting locations for precincts 1, 2, and 5. That motion was made after discussion by Paul Veroni, it was seconded by Nick Delvento, and it was voted on unanimously. I'll be bringing a motion under old business of this meeting. The second issue was the Resident Parking Sticker Program, which is Chapter 1048 of the Town Ordinances. And there was much discussion about personal passenger vehicles, which a company owned, being allowed to come in. There was a discussion from probably 10 or 15 people. The motion was tabled. Motion tabled was made by Nick Delvento and seconded by Paul Veroni. That was tabled. Meeting was adjourned at 8:53 PM.
Thank you.
Counsel Mail, any update on the DPW with the parking lot?
I am meeting with Mr. McKenna and Tim Gordon to go over some of the structural rules that we'll need to review before we move forward. Then I was hoping to call a public meeting for that, to discuss the concept. And I was gonna also invite the Economic Development Group along with the DPW.
So it would be a DPW meeting, public meeting, and then, yeah, okay, great.
And then, and then I did have another issue there. So, I noticed you have something on FEMA, and I went to that meeting, and I was wondering if we shouldn't throw that to DPW. Because when we were at those meetings, and you, you were there, when we were at those meetings, there's, there's a lot of facets that are going into this, and we talked about, you know, potentially organizing, we, we met a guy from FEMA Insurance Division, and we talked about possibly getting a group of town insurance agents that this guy could get up to speed on what was going on. And I know you've had some conversations, and there's some other information that's come out with the bill. And, and I, I asked the one question that I thought was important, because people had asked me, and that was, if you are not in the floodplain, but think you may be going into the floodplain, when should you think about purchasing insurance to gain any of what they call the grandfathering or the lower rates? And it came to me that sometime in November or December of this year is when those people that are moving into the floodplain should really think about it. Now, we got, I think you actually, Peter, got their new flood map.
Yeah, I gave that all to, to Mr. McKenna. I think at this point, we should let him handle it, and if we wanted to do some sort of a presentation at the next meeting when we get a little more information.
Well, I, I think we, we have, I mean, it's, it's obviously not something that's happening tomorrow, but I think we should have some type of plan that we have that helps protect the town, especially the citizens that either have the stuff or are going to get it. So, because it's, it's a big issue for people.
Okay, but let, let's hold on that, and if the DPW committee would like to get together with Mr. McKenna, but we'll do it as a, I envision it as, as DPW, but like the parking lot thing, I think it needs other involvement, and I'd like to have Jim kind of spearhead that. Capital Assets, Counsel Valcour.
Thank you. And the Capital Assets Committee met at the La Ciam Room of the E.B. Newton Monday, February 3rd. Meeting was called to order at 7:05 PM. In attendance were myself, Counselors Callar, Sanford, Mail, Delvento, Counselor Boncor, Counselor Perry, Chief Flanagan, Chief Terrence De La Hanty, CFO Tim Gordon, and Town Manager James McKenna. CFO Tim Gordon presented the committee with the recently updated capital improvement plan and funded through, which is funded through the general fund. This list was prioritized with ratings from 1 to 4, 4 being the highest priority. There were many priorities requested from the town department heads, as well as a wish list. Counsel President requested into, requested looking into repairs for the cupola and clock on the E.B. Newton Building. Chief Flanagan updated the committee on his diligent efforts to obtain grants from the MWRA, Homeland Security, and Green Money Grants. Chief Flanagan is also working on helping out the police department in effort to obtain portable radio replacements for the department, thus allowing the committee to put that request on hold until next year. This week, free up funding that was originally requested. Chief Flanagan also discussed engine truck replacement. These truck, the trucks that we have range from 17 to 27 years old, and is still in service and are now considered undependable. Chief Flanagan was able to obtain a grant for $70,000 to replace breathing apparatus. He also brought to our attention that Town of Winthrop has not purchased an engine in 22 years. Much work is needed on the stations, some of which he's trying to get done in-house. However, the roof work, copper valleys, waste pipe replacements, steam pipes will need to be done by contractors who specialize in those areas. Regional dispatch was briefly discussed. Chief De La Hanty was on hand to discuss the priorities of the police department. The town is trying to stay ahead of the curve with a plan to purchase a vehicle each year for the next five years. Chief De La Hanty discussed the critical need to replace firearms and equipment. The police station is in dire need of repairs, including replacing rotted windows, lead removal around the windows, and a changeover of the air conditioning and heating systems. The DPW's priority request was for two major pieces of equipment, a Bobcat with snow blower. Counsel Delvento suggested upgrading to a mid-sized model with a, with a possible mower and bucket. And replacement of a W, and also, there was discussion on the replacement of a W3 utility truck, which currently is rotted and has an opening to the road, which allows for exhaust fumes to enter the vehicle that could present potential health hazards after prolonged use. The DPW Director requested the continuance of the sidewalk replacement program for the next five years. It has proven to be a very successful project. Major roads were discussed detailing some changes to the projects, which would include additional streets being added, roadway and sidewalk improvements to Kennedy Drive, expansion of existing parking lot, Veterans Road drainage improvements that will be dredging both drainage basins upstream of the Title Gate. Town Clerk is requesting the town consider a record scanning project to convert town records over a period of time. Total cost to be investigated is spread out over several years. The Treasury Department has requested an implementation of a cash drawer system to improve hardware and software to improve cash transaction controls and reconciliation process. Discussion on importance of installation of emergency backup power generators critical for communications equipment. The library has requested improvements to become ADA compliant and convert to push-button doors. The committee members were in favor of recommending various change, these various changes discussed. Motion by Counsel Sanford, seconded by Counsel Callar to adjourn due to another meeting beginning in the room. All were in favor, meeting adjourned at 8:11 PM.
Counsel, can I just add one correction on the cupola that I was concerned about? It's the one on the town hall.
I'm sorry.
I, I know that they're talking about the E.B. Newton School tour, but my concern is the one on top of here for now. Thank you.
And the clock is on the E.B. Newton?
Right.
Okay, okay.
Uh, okay, Town Manager, Town Manager's report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I'll be brief. I wanted to have Steve Callar do a brief update on the storm condition and what we plan for tomorrow. Please. The forecasts haven't changed much. They're still predicting the snow coming in around 5:00 AM this morning. What we did, we did advertise tonight for a parking ban at 8:00 AM. We're expecting the bulk of the storm to occur between 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM, dropping approximately four to six inches. An additional two to three inches from noon time to 6:00 PM, and just flurrying, probably being out here around 10:00 PM tomorrow night. They're still calling anywhere from six to nine inches of snow. But we did advertise the parking ban for 8:00 AM, and we are ready to go. We do have plenty of salt and powder on.
So the school superintendent has not called the school?
He's waiting till tomorrow morning to call.
He's waiting till first thing in the morning and get advice from you folks about the condition. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question? Do we have a count on the tide conditions and if there's gonna be any flooding? There's no tidal concerns whatsoever. Heavy white snow versus local pattern.
Yeah, I should, I should have mentioned that. The forecast does say, even though at 8:00, 8:00 AM, there's a wall of snow coming in, so the coverage is gonna happen pretty quick after 8:00 AM, so, thank you.
So we'll have to evaluate as we find our conditions in the morning with regard to, you know, the, whether public buildings will have adequate access to them. I do have, as a matter of, an option for, I know we're planning on meeting tomorrow evening. Should the weather inhibit those who are going to be in attendance to that meeting? I do have a conference call number, and we can create a conference call with our guests. It's an executive session. So I do have a number for that. If you're not gonna be able to get here, I'll give you that number. It's a dial-in number, 781...
Can you email it to us?
You're giving out the phone number for the executive session. Just email it to us.
Oh, okay, excuse me. You're right. You're right. Oops.
It only accepts certain people, but...
Yeah, they don't want the code and the number.
But, you know what? Okay, I don't have the code, but I do have a number.
We have all data already. Right, I think what we'll, what we'll do is just maybe tonight decide, are we gonna do a conference call? Are we gonna have an executive session? Or should we just put the whole thing off to Tuesday? I think it makes sense to have a, any, any one of those options.
Yeah.
Do we wanna decide that now?
And what, would we do it here or in the emergency operations room where they have all the...
Your house.
We'd be able to call in to, like Paul said, a number.
Oh, I see, call in. Okay.
So we could all call into a number and all be in our houses and doing it?
Yeah, the system accepts 16 people to call in.
Should we just plan to do that, or should we hold until the...
Why don't, why don't I send out a note to everyone?
Emails, okay.
Why don't I send out a note to everyone in the morning?
Hold on, let's, let's hear what Jim's saying.
I'll send a note out in the morning, informing folks of all the details.
Okay.
And you can choose to either, you know, be on the call, you can be on the call in the council chambers if you prefer. Okay, it's through our own system that we're using to, to be able to do this. So, you can be here or you can be at home and call in.
Okay, so we'll, we'll plan, as of right now, we'll plan tomorrow night as a conference call.
Yeah.
And we'll either do it from home, or we can come here and do it at school.
Right.
Okay?
Good catch.
Okay.
How many people is 10, 11?
And our guests.
Can I, can I get a ruling of a technicality? Do we have to open a, do we have to open a meeting and then go into executive session?
I understood that you can, yes, you do. You have to call the meeting.
I think we continue the meeting to tonight, to the executive committee meeting of tomorrow night.
That works.
Do it tonight.
That's fine. That works. Okay, good. Thank you. Counsel Valcour.
Call me, Phil.
Okay, a brief update on the Winthrop Beach Project, and I'd ask Terry to give us a brief update.
Yes, we had a meeting last week. Myself, Chief Flanagan, Counsel President was, was there as well, with DCR and members of the Saugus contingency on the trucking of sand towards the Shore Drive and the renourishment, continuing to renourish that, that whole area. The good news, it'll be starting very shortly, within the next two weeks, we do anticipate the parking lot on Crest Ave to begin. Simultaneously, we will have trucks being trucked in, about 12 trucks a day, only carrying rock, not carrying sand. Once the completion of the parking lot is done, at that point, we will see some sand trucks. You know, tentatively, we're looking, you know, middle of February for the initial beginning of some trucks, about 11 a day, and then probably mid-March to late March, the sand trucks will start. When the sand trucks start, there will be parking restrictions on Crest Ave until about 2:30, 3 o'clock in, in the afternoon. Nighttime, the parking situation will resume to its normal activity. There will be enforcement of the two-hour limit in the Crest Ave front lot, not the lot being constructed, but the front ones closest to the businesses. There'll be detail losses on Crest Ave to cross people, and also the, the timing to a two-minute, a two-hour limit to turn over that lot for other customers to come into the business districts to minimize the impacts on the economics of this whole project on them. We will, they will have a public meeting that will be posted shortly for the entire community. Again, all the departments will be there, and we will post it through our websites and notification systems that we have in place, plus WCAT and the transcript as well.
Thank you, Chief. Just a quick question. You mentioned the truck loads, how many for the rock? How many for the sand per day? Is it gonna be as heavy as it looks?
We're looking at 20 an hour.
20 an hour.
Jerosane.
20 an hour in, 20 an hour, so 40 an hour.
40 trucks coming in an hour.
Eighteen minutes, there'll be a truck one way.
The trucks, the rocks are gonna be smaller trucks, and they, they also, there are gonna be 11 total per day. So...
For the rock.
For the rock.
Say it, 20 per hour.
20 per hour at maximum. Peak times, so.
Were there questions for the chief on that?
I did say, just so you know, when we discussed with them, if the project was working correctly, there was gonna be a truck every four minutes initially, if everything was going well. We insisted on them having a communications officer and a holding pattern. So they will come in, five trucks in a convoy, under police escort, as well as the winter police office, police officers looking out for the residents and the merchants on Crest Avenue. Those trucks will come, as they dump, they'll radio, and the next five will come. The other trucks will be held at our location out of Winthrop. So, we won't be, if something goes wrong with the logistics, a dump and a, a truck, dump body can't come down, you know, every four minutes, we won't have another truck coming in to Winthrop. So they're gonna come in in groups of five, police escorted, and they'll be held out of town until the next group is radioed in.
Counsel, just a typical dump truck type?
18, 18-wheeler type, again, running around at 65 to 85 ton.
Any other questions? Counsel...
That was a part of our time.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Counsel Mail.
Wasn't there, wasn't there another proposed groin at the top of the beach?
Yes, that's what they're gonna build.
That took the rocks apart.
Is that what the rocks are for? So those are, those are gonna be substantial sized rocks. We're not talking about bedding rocks.
Twenty tons, 12 trucks, one rock, a truck, and some of them.
One, all right.
They've done the classification of the rocks already, and they've divided them, classified them all.
So that's for the building of a groin up at the top of the beach, and then the sand. Okay, I wasn't sure if there was a layer of rock that was the bedding for the sand. Okay.
Any other questions? I'll answer your way. Mr. McKenna?
So, you know, communication's gonna be key to this whole thing. I'm grateful to hear about the website. I have been talking to Barbara Bishop about that issue too, and I know that the, there are some other resource. DCR is gonna do everything they can to have that, you know, the details of their route, their contact names, information, all that on a website. People can access it and have a, a pin board where people can post their concerns and whatnot and have those concerns addressed. So, they're gonna be very active with responding to folks and, you know, being able to lessen the amount of calls that, that our office gets or, or they get elsewhere. We, I'm pleased to report, and I wanna thank the Speaker's Office for successfully putting two important projects on the transportation bond bill, and was approved at the House last week. The Winter Street Corridor, it still remains as a viable project on the transportation bond bill, passed another important vote, and that was for 2.25 million. And it doesn't get us all the way on that project, but certainly far down the road. So certainly a good first phase will be funded through this, a different source than the tip process. So that's a, makes the project, you know, a little bit more viable. And then Walk Winthrop, as was discussed tonight, that was also voted positively for half a million dollars. So that would give, really help us to start that ball rolling and build out a lot of that, probably at least a third of what that full project would, would require. So that's, that's great news, and I wanna thank the Speaker for his advocacy for those important projects. We are starting to have a, an hour session of counseling at the Senior Center for opioid addiction. We have a professionally trained, mass-licensed person who will be conducting a private counseling and tutoring sessions with folks who suffer from addiction at the Senior Center. Call the Senior Center, and they will certainly get you in touch with this individual to follow your, your, if any, if you know of anyone who needs assistance. I think this is a great first step for the community in addressing a very serious issue of opioid addiction. And the folks, we work in a regional collaborative with Revere and Chelsea and Saugus on this issue, and they'll be issuing a report in the next few months with respect to the region and with particular issues of the town of Winthrop. And so, we should be learning a lot more about the extent and the invasiveness of this issue and, and how this is a good first step of addressing, hopefully, some of what unfortunately many, you know, some residents are suffering from. I met with Congresswoman Clark on Thursday last week. It was a nice introduction. Very enthusiastic about her new role, very thrilled about Winthrop, got to know Winthrop intimately, you know, when she campaigned and, you know, could name, you know, people and, and, and streets and familiarity with a lot of, you know, what Winthrop was about. She walked up and down the streets while she was campaigning, was, it seems to be very truly, you know, enthusiastic about representing this community. We talked about the flood insurance issue as the primary concern, and she's aware of the efforts in the House to develop a bill for putting a hold on this implementation and structuring an affordability component to the flood insurance problem. And so, House Bill three three seven zero, Homeowner Flood Insurance Affordability Act is proposed, and she's signing on to that and, and working with the rest of the congressional delegation. I believe all of the members of the congressional delegation, including the senators, have all signed on to a letter supporting this bill. So, it did pass the Senate. It's on to the House. We'll see where it goes. I hope they take it up, but it certainly would provide some immediate relief on that issue for us. And MAPC on that issue has agreed to coordinate a joint appeal of the flood maps on behalf of Winthrop, Boston, Chelsea and Revere, and so, potentially Somerville as well. So, they'll be in touch with us over the next few days to see how they can coordinate specific issues and concerns that we have and work in signing on an expert, because we really have to address the science issues and the potential weaknesses in what has been proposed as, as these new flood maps. There are a number of issues that we can learn from a number of other communities that have successfully appealed, so we're borrowing from their, those reports and use potentially some of the same talent to come in and look at Winthrop in particular and add those to a group of, of communities that will appeal, you know, en masse. And that may have significant force and effect to get the implementation stalled while the science is under review. So, that's now going forward, and I appreciate MAPC again stepping forward. They're, they're doing five significant exercises for the town of Winthrop. They've certainly stepped up, you know, in the past few years and have aided us. They're doing our zoning rewrite, they're doing this, they did a road space plan, they're working on regional efforts for us. They've, they've been a tremendous agency for the community, for the fact that we don't have a planning department. They've really stepped in and helped us. The budget process has begun. We're having our first Citizens Advisory Committee meeting next week, and it, it's, it's going to be challenging. You know, I think last year, we, we had a very strong budget and, and, and strong finish. This year looks to be a little more challenging in a number of ways. The governor's proposal is very, very light in terms of local aid. The retirement contribution looks to be a little higher than, than expected. Health insurance is showing some signs of, of being challenging. And, you know, just, you know, trying to address the many things that I, I'm going to forecast in the budget, certainly, you know, it's going to be challenging. We've got contract issues that are, they're now, our contracts expire as of June, so certainly, we're going to have lots, lots to accomplish in this budget, and so, it may, it may require a little more than, than, than effort than we had to anticipate. But, I have a good team and everyone seems to understand, you know, that, what the challenges are and, you know, I, I think we'll get through it. I do have some concerns tonight about where we are in the level of reserves being put forth as deposits into our stabilization accounts. I went through the numbers very closely this afternoon with my finance team, and I think we're, I, I think we need to take a, a, a longer look at just how much we're going to need to get through the balance of the year. When you consider that we've had a number of expenses that really came, that, that were one-time expenses for us that have reduced the town council reserve at this point from one seventy to, now we're balanced at seventy-five thousand, that's really thin for where we, we should be at this point. In addition, our free cash that we have still available that has not been otherwise designated has been reduced as well because we funded a number of studies and we've seen some expenses incurred. So, I'm, I'm not, I'm feeling like we, our margin of, of success for the end of the year is going to be tighter than, than I hoped. And so, I'm going to ask that when we take those matters up, to give a slight haircut to the, to the recommendations if, if you would consider. And I have some suggested amounts. I'm, I'm looking for a difference of about seventy thousand dollars to make sure that we don't end up the year in, in the red. So, that's my final statement on that, and I'll wait till we take those matters up.
On the theme, let's back to that for a second. Plumb County just settled something as far as the appeal yesterday. I read Plumb County got...
Yes, they successfully appealed. Right. And so, we're going to be looking at that. Yeah.
Thank you. All business. On the middle, high school loan auto, we continued the public hearing tonight till next week, so we're going to continue the vote till next week on that one. Counselor, Vice President.
I may take them out of order. I have them set up to go through them. The first motion that came, that we're going to take action on was from committee. This motion is dated January fourteenth, and that's the motion, Town Council authorized to rescind, authorized unissued borrowing as listed below. It's from committee, so doesn't need a second. And that, I'll read the items that are going to be coming off. These are items that several years ago, many, many years ago, some of them were voted, they were, their extra amounts that were authorized to borrow, they're never used. So, I'm going to read them as a group and I'm going to read the state promotion again. Move that the Town Council authorized to rescind, authorized unissued borrowing as listed below. Water meters, radio read by town meeting vote of March tenth, that was Article nine, six hundred thousand dollars unused, unissued. Oh, five? Town meeting of March, March tenth, two thousand and five, Article nine, six hundred thousand dollars is not issued. Sore inflow infiltration, town meeting vote of May twenty-sixth of two thousand and five, it was Article number seven, one hundred seventy-two thousand dollars unissued. A slope stabilization bonds of town meeting vote, December fourth, two thousand and seven, Article seven, five hundred thousand dollars unissued. Sore, a sore vote, sore bond of eight, twenty, oh eight, three hundred fifty dollars unissued. A water bond vote of twelve, December sixth, two thousand and eleven, five hundred forty, five hundred fifty-four thousand, six hundred dollars unissued. A sore bond of, vote of twelve, December sixth, two thousand and eleven, of forty-six thousand, one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars unissued. For a total of one million eight hundred seven, three thousand and seventy-five dollars of unissued bonds, authorized borrowing.
Motion by Counselor Del, Vice President Delvento. Coming from committee does not require a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Counselor De Vento.
We have a series of five item, five motions that came from the stabilization, capital stabilization study. The first two motions had to set up stabilization accounts that currently don't exist. The third, third, fourth and fifth motions had to transfer monies into those accounts, which I think the town mayor is going to want to see an amendment on those numbers. The first motion from committee is move that the Town Council establish a Town Council Capital Stabilization Fund in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section five B, for the purpose of funding the town's capital improvement needs or take any other actions relative heretofore.
There being no, coming from committee, no need for a second. Is there any discussion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Second motion. Move that the Town Council establish a Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund in accordance with the Mass General Law, Section, Chapter forty, Section five B, for the purpose of funding extraordinary unforeseen town facility maintenance expenditures or take any other action relative heretofore.
Coming from committee, no need for a second.
Rest up for the storm, Mr. President.
Okay. Good, good. Thank you, gentlemen. Any discussion on the motion?
Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Counselor?
The original motion is motion move that the Town Council transfer four hundred, four hundred fifty thousand dollars from free cash to Town Council Capital Stabilization Fund for the purpose of funding the town's capital improvement needs or take any other action relative heretofore.
There being no need for a second coming from committee? Mr. McKenna?
Yes, I would ask that the amount be amended to four hundred.
I'll make that amendment, Mr. President. Amendment offered by Counsel, Vice President Delvento. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel O'Teary. The motion has been, on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. On the main motion, as amended. Is there any discussion? Counsel?
No.
Motion? I didn't know you needed a motion.
No, you don't.
It, it is an amended motion, so I guess we do need a second.
Make the motion.
You want to make, you want to make the motion? As a motion, seconded by Counsel Sanford. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Great. So... Counselor Mills, excuse me. That's all right. So, you said that we bought a couple of things and we spent a few dollars. Is this based on the casino spending?
Little bit.
Much of a little. I mean, you're talking seventy thousand.
Well, here's the deal.
Go ahead, because I'm...
When these amounts were a little, what were proposed, we, we didn't forecast dating consultants, looking at law bills where they were at, seeing a number of other issues come at us. And although we have a balance probably of available funds to close out the year at around a hundred and seventy-five, that's very thin. And I want to put back about seventy back into that bandwidth so that we know we're going to close out and make it and not be so tight that if we, if unforeseen matters happen and we don't have available funds, we'll, we'll, we'll show a deficit on the books. So, it's really, I'm not proposing these as available monies to be spent. I want to make sure that, looking out the front window, we're going to have enough bandwidth. We usually operate around two and a quarter to two fifty in terms of what we forecast we need to finish, and that, that's usually taking into account where the reserve, the council reserve is and other available sources. When we do the metrics on what, where we're at, we're about at sixty-five to seventy percent spent. And that, that going into this balance of the year is very thin. So, I, I, I think the better part of valor here is to make sure that we have enough bandwidth to make sure all accounts will be solved. If I have a hit on our, just one, one hit on our health insurance, is, 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 it could be a big one. And I, I'm not forecasting that right now, but I got word from Tim today that, that he's a bit anxious about that, that one account. But there's more in front of us than that one account. There's some staffing deficiencies that we're going to take, be taking a look at for the balance of the year. There's some, you know, some, some odds and ends. We, we got hit with a few hot water heater things go and boiler go, and we've got, you know, general expense, operating expense on a forty, you know, six million dollar operation to be sailing into the balance of the year with only about, you know, one and a half percent available is not enough. It's just not enough in the gas tank.
So, just how much of this is from operational issues versus extraordinary? I mean, if you're, the seventy thousand, is eighty percent operational, is thirty percent operational? Just trying to get a gauge.
Right now, most of it is because of what we have allocated, not because of, you know, what our needs are. When you look at the fact that we, we hired a school resource officer, we, we, we had a veterans expense that, that was an unexpected hit. We have an economic development study that we funded. We had an indirect cost study. We have town attorney expenses on several significant cases. Those are all unforeseen but necessary expenses that we've already agreed to. They've reduced our available, you know, town council reserve by, you know, sixty-five percent. So, and we're, we're in February, early February. I'm just saying as a, as a matter of a measure of what we generally need going forward, we need a little more bandwidth than where we're at to make sure we don't end up in a deficit. And, you know, I'm, I'm grateful for money when it gets turned back, but I can't guarantee it until it happens.
Any further discussion on the motion? Three as amended. If not, did you? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Motion number four.
Motion number four. I move the Town Council transfer one hundred fifty thousand free cash to the Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund with the purpose of funding extraordinary unforeseen town facility maintenance expenditures or take any other action relative heretofore.
Coming from committee, there's no need for a second. Do we have an amendment on that or...
No, that's fine.
If not, all, uh, excuse me. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Number five.
I move the Town Council transfer three hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred thirty dollars from free cash to fund nine three two stabilization fund or take any other action relative heretofore.
Coming from committee, no need for a second?
Yes.
Is there, you have an amendment?
Amendment to three hundred.
Three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Mr. President, I'll make the, offer an amendment to this motion to make the value three hundred thousand dollars even for free cash. Motion by Counsel Delvento, seconded, because it's Vice President Delvento, seconded by Counsel O'Teary. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor of the, of the amendments say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Main motion? Can we have a, is it the main motion? Again, read it.
I move the Town Council transfer as amended three hundred thousand dollars from free cash to fund nine thirty-two stabilization fund or take any other action relative heretofore.
Do I have a second? Second. Second by Counsel O'Teary. Any discussion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
I move the Town Council transfer twenty-four thousand from Town Council Reserve Account zero one one one, zero five two five seven six one zero zero to Town Attorney Contract Services Line Item, one zero one one five one five two five four four three five zero to cover the additional legal costs due to the expense of ongoing legal matters and take any other, any action relative heretofore.
Coming from committee, there's no need for a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. It's eight, two, one. Without discussion? You didn't want to discuss? Okay.
I'm opposed, because I don't take counsel.
Oh, okay. I got you. Okay. The Verizon calls have been tabled. The resident parking sticker has been tabled. Correct? Counsel?
Yes.
Okay. So, but you do have a motion on the relocation of the voting.
I do have a motion coming out of committee, and that motion is, in accordance with Mass General Law, is Chapter fifty-four, Section twenty-four, which gives the Town Council authority, the Town Council now designates the coming school as the voting location for precincts one, two and five.
Second. Second. Second, there's no need for a second coming out of committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. So, parking lot motion is still on hold. Capital improvement, there is no motion on that.
All right, you don't need a motion on the, no.
Okay. Appointments, we do have an opening. We go to the unfortunate passing of Jim Little. We do have an opening in the GoToHealth. It has been advertised, and we do have some applications. The deadline for applications is 9:00 a.m. on Monday. That's this coming Monday. Public relations, February 6th, Ms. Boyagen's life skills psychic program at the high school. She looks to be very interesting. Starts at 5:45 with hors d'oeuvres and then moves into the program at 6:30. Music Matters is having their fundraiser on February 15th. Is there any further public relations or upcoming events?
Yeah.
Counselor Mills?
Well, no, but, you know, I did get a, an email from my mother today about, no, I sent it off to you, and I guess that there's a gentleman who's been very generous to the school scholarship, and I have to pick that up. But there's been a gentleman that's been very, very generous. I think he may give a $5,000 donation every year, and he passed away over the weekend, and I don't, do you have his name? I sent the email out, and I have to open up another system to read it, but he's been a major benefactor to the school scholarship program, and I may be wrong, but I believe he may have left a sizable investment for the scholarship, but I don't know that John's not here. I did want to recognize him. We should probably do something a bit more formal about that.
Maybe we could do a moment of silence at the next meeting when we have more verification as to...
Yeah, I'll try to get that. And finally, I've had a tremendous amount of questions.
Yes. The name is Paul Facella.
Paul.
Paul Facella.
Yeah.
But as far as the details on that, until we get kind of maybe permission from the family or something, I would prefer to hold on that.
Does the school, maybe do have this in there?
I don't know. I don't, I just, this is the first I've heard of him.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? And one other, I've been inundated over the last week with people coming up to me asking me what we're doing with the casino, and it seems like there's a lot of people around town that may feel that because they're not seeing any action from us and they're seeing action from other towns, that we haven't been diligent about it. And I do want to say to the community as a whole, that, you know, we're actually putting a tremendous amount of time into this, both at the town manager's level and at the council level through meetings, and because of the structure of it, they're not public. But it doesn't mean that we're not actively pursuing it, and the fact that other towns have taken a more laissez-faire approach to it, and our approach seems to be more directed at making sure that both the project owners know how important this is to the town and the fact that we as a council feel how important it is to the town. This is not something that's going to end up, and we're not in the public eye because of this.
I have to hold and interrupt Counselor. Due to the confidentiality of this, I don't want to jeopardize any process that we have going on just to say that we are working diligently. We do have counsel that's working with us, and we certainly are not ignoring the issue, but we are proceeding cautiously to get the best bang for our buck. But I would prefer that we not have any open discussion on it at this point until... Okay, could I have a motion? There is no further, a motion to continue tonight's meeting to tomorrow night for the purpose of executive session only at 6:30.
I make that motion. I make motion, continue tonight's meeting until tomorrow evening at 6:30 for the purpose of executive session.
Do I have a second? Second by Counsel Luteri. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. If opposed, unanimous.
See you tomorrow night at 6:30.